Good evening. I'd like to call the November 5th Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Welcome, everybody. Hope everybody had a good Halloween. Hopefully, you're not loaded down with candy while you're here. But thanks for being here. First item of business will be the invocation and the pledge. Please stand.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we begin this commission meeting with gratitude and thanks for all of the blessings that have been given. We remember those who are less fortunate, and we work to be a blessing in their lives. We remember our men and women in uniform around the world and their families, who sacrificed so much that we can be free. And Father, we remember our first responders, who closer to home put our needs first before theirs. For all of those we remember this evening, we ask for safety and blessings upon them. And for this meeting, we ask that our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us as we address the important matters of today. For all of this, we are grateful. We say thank you, and we say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is to approve minutes. There's actually five sets of minutes that we need to approve. We can do them all at once.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next we go on to is our First Proclamation. And... Madam Secretary, I'm gonna let you do that while I'm on my way down.
Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. This board is proud of the young people of St. Lucie County, who have unlimited potential to become the workers and leaders of tomorrow. Many of the county's young people need effective community organizations that help young people reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. GL Homes is working with Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie County, the preeminent youth development organization in the area, to provide scholarships for homeless club members and to support programs that promote nutrition and combat hunger among young people. GL Homes has lent its considerable expertise to Boys and Girls Club of St. Lucie County in the form of shadowing and mentoring programs that broaden the horizons of young people, all of which allow young people to gain skills needed to earn a livable wage. National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, celebrated this year in early November, is a time when people across America come together to promote awareness of the problems of hunger and homelessness in America. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim the week of November 9th through 16th, 2019, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board also commends GL Homes and Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie County for their work in promoting awareness of these important community issues in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted this fifth day of November, 2019.
I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, we have Will Armstead. And you look nothing like Will, so... And I don't think you're Charles, but it's very nice to have you guys here. I'll give you this, and I think Eric's gonna take a couple photos.
Hi, I'm Melanie Wiles from Boys and Girls Clubs. I'm Chief Operating Officer. We're so happy to be here today, and we appreciate this resolution from the commission. At the club, we actually have 20 locations, so we do strive to serve children that are in poverty, that are homeless, that do have hunger needs, and we're proud to say that we do serve our kids dinner every single evening. We have phenomenal partners like Charlie here from GL Homes, and I'll invite him up. We're approaching our 25th year anniversary, and we're celebrating all year and providing even more for our kids, but we couldn't do that without the people in this room, and especially our partners in GL Homes.
Thank you, Melanie. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Charlie Sines. I work with GL Homes. And we at GL recognize that there are a lot of people, especially children, you know, that are without food or shelter, not only during the holiday season, but throughout the year. So, we're happy to support the Boys and Girls Club of Port St. Lucie to bring awareness to this issue. And we're also, you know, very happy to contribute a small part to make sure that these boys and girls have an opportunity to achieve their full potential. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Excuse me, I have a quick comment. Melanie, I know that you're not Will, but you guys do a great job for the kids in this community. Charlie, I've known GL Homes now for a long time. You're doing a great job, and I certainly appreciate that you are giving back to the community in a big way. So, thank you very much to GL Homes. Okay. Now, we go on to public comment. This will exclude any public hearing items. I'm sorry. You had something first?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to appoint Stuart Allen Mensah to the Board of Adjustments and request the Board ratify my appointment. Thank you.
Okay. I understand that there is a timing issue on this?
Yes.
For a meeting and a quorum?
And that's why I asked this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, now, we will go on to public comment, excluding any public hearing items. Madam Secretary, would you like to call the names?
Yes, ma'am. We have two that have signed up for general public column. Cogment, Eileen Lux.
How are ya?
Good. How are you?
I was here last April about the animal control nuisance with the dogs barking. And I made an appointment for each one of you, and I went in with my neighbor and talked to you guys about it. And as of now, nothing's happened, absolutely nothing. And I've been looking at the ordinances in the surrounding counties, Indian River, Okeechobee, and Martin County, and I've been reading their ordinances. Because I believe you guys were gonna look into it and see what the surrounding counties do with their dog barking. I don't know if you did or not, but I did. Anyways, as far as the dogs barking, he still has 20 to 30 dogs. They bark, 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 bark. And it's just, it's overwhelming. Now, I know a lot of people say, well, in the city, they have the barking ordinance. Well, that's fine, you know, oh, well. But they bark in the county, too. And when you have 20 or 30 dogs barking, like 150 feet from your house, and you can't even stay out on your back porch, if you go out in your yard, the dogs go nuts. I've tried to talk to him. There's no talking to him, absolutely none. I've tried to talk to him two or three times, and every time I try to talk to him, he calls the cops on me. And the cops say, well, there's nothing we can do. There has to be something. There has to be something done. Because, I mean, I can understand the ordinances in the city, but what about the county? I mean, the people that live out there for peace, quiet, they have property. You know, they can't even get in their backyard. You know, this is just, it's outrageous. It really is. And, I mean, it's affecting my health. It really is. So, I want to know what the status of all this is. You know, what's been done? What you guys done, or what's going on? I know you said you were gonna get the attorneys to look into it. Have the attorneys looked into it? I don't know.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I can answer that question really quickly. Ma'am, and to the Board, we have done a survey of some of the jurisdictions in the state of Florida, looking at the different ordinances, and our plan is to bring that back to the workshop for the Board in December.
In December?
Yes, ma'am.
So, something, I guess you'll readdress it in December, then? That's next month?
That's next month, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, how long will it take after that?
Depends on the Board's direction.
So, the ordinance have been looked at, and the attorneys have done their thing on it and everything, so it'll come next month?
Next month is when we'll have the conversation. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I'll be back next month. Thank you.
We have Kathy Drench.
My name is Kathy Drench. I live at 9338 Carlton Road, Port St. Lucie. And I, along with Ali and our neighbors, to the man, who are raising these dogs. And I'm really feeling so much better knowing that this work has started, because I felt good when you guys did take this back to your informal meeting. We did read the minutes and see that it was gonna be followed, but from our perspective, nothing has changed on this. I think the thing, I actually woke up in the middle of the night thinking, what do I say to you people? You know the law, you know everything. And the only thing I came up was to say, it's really wrong. It's wrong that an individual can impede on somebody else's peace and quiet. I mean, the thing of it is, though, we live in a country. We hear cows. We hear chickens. We have alligators, but they don't come under agriculture. We had dogs and cats forever out there for years. And the only time we heard them was at mealtime. This is completely different. This is an invasion in our peace, and there's no communicating. We've been told by you guys, try and handle it like good neighbors. We've tried all of that. So, that the only reason he feels is, in fact, I had called him one night and asked him, it was like 12 o'clock, if he could keep his dogs quiet. And he said, well, they're dogs. And I said, well, you can't keep them running, calling all night. So, what I heard, I understood, was the next day, he had to say, well, I'll get 100 dogs out here and make noise. You know, that's an abolition of how this rule was written. This rule was minted to protect the farmers. He's not a farmer. He's riding on the farmers' strings. And I'm so pleased, and I just hope that you guys can understand that this really is an issue. I have, and I have given each of you, and I don't know what I should do with this now, is a copy of the letter from neighbors, understanding when we had called the owners of this property, he was, he lives in Miami, so he doesn't care. And he said, well, you live out there, you can't hear anything. The neighbors that signed this are all, you know, within a mile, mile and a half away. You know, it travels, you know, sound travels. So, I appreciate the fact that you're all looking into this, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, did you want to make that part of the record? You had letters?
It's fine. I'm sorry. I thought she said that she had already given them to us.
Right, I thought she was asking us what to do with it, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Madam Secretary, are there any others?
I have no one else that submitted a form.
Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? This is your opportunity. Okay, we will go forward. So, our next item is a presentation on environmental stewardship, a recognition for local farmer. And that is Brant Sherard and Casey Hilliard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all this evening?
Good.
Glad to hear that. Mr. Mitchell, thank you so much for your assistance navigating the building.
Very welcome.
I'm out of Gainesville, so I have come down this evening to recognize the 2019 St. Lucie County CARES recipient. My name is Casey Hilliard, and I am the Farm Bureau CARES Program Coordinator, like I said, out of Gainesville. So, Gator country, don't hold that against me if you're not a Gator fan. I actually grew up down, or just over in Arcadia and have family here in Fort Pierce. So, it is certainly an honor to be here this evening to give this presentation. And before I recognize the Sherard family, I would really like to share with you a little bit about Farm Bureau's CARES program, if that would be okay. In 2001, the County Alliance for Responsible Environmental Stewardship, or CARES, program, was created, and almost two decades later, Farm Bureau continues to publicly recognize farmers and ranchers who demonstrate exemplary environmental protection efforts by implementing what are called best management practices, or BMPs, on their farms and ranches. Now, BMPs are very practical, everyday, common sense, but science-based practices that help producers accomplish their goals of reducing overall water and fertilizer and chemical use, as well as protecting local water quality. Through the implementation of BMPs, Florida farmers and ranchers show a sincere commitment to protecting our state's water resources and our environment. The Florida Farm Bureau is proud to recognize them for their efforts. As part of our CARES program, recipients are awarded a customized "This Farm CARES" sign, the exact one you see before you. And this sign is displayed on their farm gate or on a nearby roadway, and it helps demonstrate to the general public that Florida agriculture will always be committed to protecting our precious natural resources around the entire state. As of this year, more than 800 farm families proudly display this sign on their property. But we don't accomplish this program alone. I'd like to share two of the major partners we have for this program, because they will be very familiar to you. We're fortunate to partner with both the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences, who conducts research on BMPs, as well as the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, whose staff help producers one-on-one implement their BMP programs. Their expertise and assistance to our producers is greatly valued, and it just makes such the difference in a program like CARES. This evening, I am honored to share with you why Farm Bureau feels this year's recipient, Sherard Family LLC, is a farm who cares. Mr. Brantley Sherard Senior began his career in Florida agricultural production in the late '60s, and later went on to start his own family operation, growing citrus and raising beef cattle, along with his son, Brantley Sherard Jr. And we're fortunate to have both of them here with us this evening. And Mr. Sherard Senior actually shared that he flew all the way from the Canadian border during a hunt trip just to be here with us this evening. So, that means a lot to me that he made that extra effort to get down here and join us. But BMPs have been implemented on their operations since its inception. It was and still is important to him today. In fact, we talked about it as soon as he got here this evening, that the hundreds, probably if not thousands, of acres they own, the wetlands, the water resources, the many natural areas filled with wildlife habitats, they've been left preserved and left undisturbed. When you go out to their property, it's not a normal farm that you would see. It looks more of a natural area than it really does look like a working ag operation. They've been very intentional about this. And the areas where they are farming are heavily managed to ensure that water and nutrient use is efficient and that water quality is always protected. Some of the most effective BMPs implemented on the citrus side of the operation include drawing surface water from canals and retention areas for irrigation. This minimizes impacts to the aquifer. Microjet irrigation is used to apply water right at the root zone, providing a water savings of up to 30%. And we're not talking just a few gallons of water every day. We're really talking about hundreds of thousands of gallons of water saved every day. When applying nutrients, variable rate applications apply, only using the exact amounts of nutrients needed, presenting excessive use. To protect soil health, soil and tissue sampling is completed regularly. This analyzes the nutritional content and guides their nutrient management program, again, only using what is needed. Additionally, native species of trees are planted. They provide windbreaks around each of the groves. And as mentioned earlier, wildlife habitats are left undisturbed. And these habitats are home to numerous species that you're pretty familiar with from this area, but definitely deer, turkeys, numerous bird species, and even a few gators. You know, I'm a Gator fan, I gotta throw that in there. But I will tell you, what is most impressive about this farm is the magnitude of water quality protection efforts. As water drains out of each grove, it enters a series of canals that move it through not just one, but multiple treatment areas before it can leave the property. During this movement, water and any nutrients not taken up by the trees directly interact with hundreds of acres of native vegetation, berms, and buffers. And these BMPs work together to take up excess nutrients and literally clean hundreds of thousands of gallons of water each day. What is also impressive about this treatment system is it is also cleaning up water that flows onto the Sherards' property from the neighboring landowner. And I will tell you, partnering with another landowner to protect water quality is Florida agriculture in its finest moments. Working together and acting on real solutions that preserve our water resources for the future is simply the right thing to do, and they have been doing it for decades now. There really are truly so many impressive and effective efforts that can be seen firsthand at the Sherards' operation. They have allowed me to extend a personal invitation, free to come out and visit with this family, get to know them. And I know you probably already know them a little bit as well, but just to see how they care for the land and its resources in person. Farm Bureau is deeply proud to award Mr. Brantley Sherard Senior, along with his son, Brantley Sherard Jr., with a 2019 CARES designation and sign. At this time, I would like to invite them to come forward to be recognized. And those of you that would love to be a part of a picture with them, or at least shake their hands, we would greatly appreciate doing so at this time. Thank you.
All right, all right. The state of Florida. Farm Bureau is the leader, probably in the number-one position for trying to do all this environmental work. And I'm very privileged to have played a part in it.
Thank you, sir.
That's our history right there. Pretty impressive. Next presentation is going to be an overview of the 2020 Census. Robin Cryer, come on up.
Robin Cryer, 11270 Southwest Apple Blossom Trail, Port St. Lucie, Florida. On behalf of the U.S. Census Bureau, I am your partnership specialist for St. Lucie County. I have a 30-minute presentation that I'll do in 10 minutes. So, I'm gonna speak really fast. You listen closely, and I'll get through really quickly. What that means, being your partnership specialist, is that I go out through the county, and I educate and motivate our residents to participate in the upcoming 2020 Census, which will be April 1st, which is 145 days away. We're running out of time to prepare, and it's vitally important. The goal of my position is to raise the response rate for St. Lucie County, because in 2010, we had a 75% response rate. That sounds good, right? No. Good! He's wagging his head, no. No, it's not good, because that means 25% of our residents did not respond. Now, President George Washington thought that it was important enough to actually put it in our Constitution for the purpose that you all are very probably much aware of, and that's to ensure that the states have enough representation. In 2010, we gained two seats from our 75% response rate. I can't help but wonder if we might have gained more had we had a complete and accurate count of 100%. Also, the next thing that is very important that I think that we all need to know is that the census data is used to determine where $675 billion are disseminated of federal funding annually over 10 years. That means we're talking about about $6 trillion. Now, because of our 25% that didn't respond in 2010, that means we lost several hundred millions of dollars. To top that off, the nation as a whole, 5% of children five and under did not get counted. So, if you think about a child that was born in 2010, they grew up a bit in the past 10 years. They may have needed WIC as an infant, and then early Head Start, and then free and reduced school lunches, but because they weren't counted in 2010, we didn't receive the funds for them. As I go along and do my presentations in your county, I have found that there seem to be two main reasons that can be solved by a good education campaign as to why people aren't responding. One is apathy. They just absolutely don't know how important it is. They just absolutely don't know how important it is. Some of them think that it doesn't apply to them. I had one grandpa tell me, when I was doing a presentation, he said, "You know, you can't tell me that I need those funds, because I don't. And you can't tell me that I care about the roads, because I don't drive anymore." And I said, "Sir, do you have a grandchild that might be in need of going to college?" And he said, "I do." And I said, "Do you have the funds for it?" And he said, "I don't." And I said, "Well, Uncle Sam just might. It's called the Pell Grant." And so he said, "Oh, maybe I will go ahead and fill out that form." And I said, "Please do." It literally applies to every single one of us in some shape or form. It's vitally important. So we need to get this message out. The other reason why I think people aren't responding is because of fear. They don't understand that the census data is completely protected. I mean, their private information, their personal information cannot be released. It's protected by Title 13 by law. For 72 years, it's sealed. And then it can only be released to the National Archives, where people who like to do genealogy, they can then tap into it for their purposes. And someone could tap into their, like, say in New Orleans, when they had, oh, they got wiped out, right? If someone had lost all of their documentation, their birth certificates, their social security cards, they couldn't get their kids into school, they could, they themselves could go to the Census Bureau, request their information to rebuild their lives. So it really does touch everyone. We need to remove the thought of the fear. Even people that are undocumented, we need them to be counted also. Anyone who's living and breathing in our county, residing here, needs to be counted. Here's why. Because if we have a natural disaster, and we do live in a hurricane zone, we've had tornadoes, and we need to evacuate, we plan based on the census data, the evacuation routes, how many water bottles, buses, boats might, we need to evacuate people, so we must know what people that we have here. So we need to let them know, it's safe and secure. We cannot release their information to any agency or individual, not the FBI, ABC, ICE, anyone. We can't release it. It's secure. The next thing that we need to let people know, first, it's vitally important, second, it's safe and secure, third, it's quick and easy. About 10 questions. It's now, this time, for the first time ever since 1790, we've been doing this. Every year that ends in a zero, it will be online, so we can do it on any device, anywhere, anytime. People can also request it, to do it by phone, and they can request a paper copy. In mid-March, every household in the nation will receive an invitation, a paper invitation in the mail, to respond. It's going to have a GEO code attached to their address, with instructions how to go online, and to fill it out, to respond. But I think one of the barriers could be, is that there are people who don't have cellphones and devices. There are people who might have the devices, but they don't have Wi-Fi. These people live in areas that we call low-response areas. St. Lucie County has two, one in Fort Pierce and one in Port St. Lucie, that I can show you if we had more time, but I don't, so I'll just move on and tell you that if you're going to form your Complete Count Committee, we need to go ahead and do it soon. 145 days until we begin, and it's moving very quickly. I'm standing by to train your CCC, if and when you stand it up. I have all kinds of ideas and resources to help. I just can't reach 312,000 people all by myself. So, one closing statement is that we get one chance, every 10 years, to shape our future for the next 10 years, and the decennial census is it, and I really need your help to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one. How long does, it starts on April 1st, but how long does it last?
Yes, sir. So the mailing's going to come out in mid-March, and so you can start doing it right then. April 1st is the day we would really like to have it by. We'll send a couple of reminders every two weeks as people don't respond, and then we'll send people out door-to-door. That's called enumeration, non-response enumeration. So that will last even after April 1st. The exact date, I don't have. It's a whole nation. Hopefully, everybody will respond online, and we won't have to pay the money to send people out door-to-door. That was a great question. Thank you.
The fact is, is if you don't want them knocking on your door, fill it out. And we have so many more options these days than we used to.
Madam Chair, I have one question. Is this going to be the long form or the short form?
This is the short form, 10 questions, about 10 minutes. I think the long form you're referring to is probably the American Community Survey. It's about 25 pages long, and we do that throughout the years, in between the decennial census, but the decennial census is a short one.
Okay. Because I've gotten both. That's why I was asking the question.
Please do both, if you get both. Do them all.
So, Robin, if I am not mistaken, have I heard that for each person that does not fill out a form, that it costs the counties, the cities, $1,600? Is that the figure I've heard?
Yes, ma'am, approximately. The figure I heard was $1,666, approximately. Yes, that's exactly right. And when I say we lost a couple of hundred million dollars, I ran those numbers, and, but, you know, I'm not a mathematician, so I have to say approximately all the time. But yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
For each person that doesn't respond, that's about the amount of money that we stand to not gain for all of the various federal funding programs and grants that we use. Things for roads and hospitals, and businesses use our data to determine if they're going to set up shop here, and then that brings services, and then, of course, they bring jobs with them that we need also. And we are hiring, too, lots of people.
There's always economic development works it in.
Well, the bad part, Madam Chair, is that we become a donor state, donor county, so there's going to be a county somewhere out there that's going to get our money and be thankful that we didn't do something, so.
That's exactly right.
We've been a donor state for a long, long time in Florida, so.
Yes. So I'm here to help you to have a complete and accurate count. Use me. I did give a packet that has a form in there, that has all different kinds of ways that you could help. Put in the website, the link on your website, and I'm ready to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric, do we have a spot on our website now?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes, on the homepage, there is a spot for the census jobs that are open, and we're working to develop a full-blown page with more information as it gets closer. We also have some events to be, have a plan to take over the fair booth, the end of February through March, which will be perfect timing for when these mailers go out.
Okay. So once again, Robin, thank you, and it sounds like we're working it.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, with Eric's help, we're also working with the cities to coordinate from our communications offices, so that we've got a complete and coordinated message.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for being here and getting that message out. So the next item of business is the consent agenda. Anyone have anything they want to pull for discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to point out, Item D4. We worked really hard, and the citizens approved the half-cent sales tax, and so this is an item that is going to be a project funded by infrastructure sales tax. So, for those of you who travel Edwards Road, you'll understand that, how important that is, because we've been waiting since the hurricane, and the damage and all that was there. So that's just an item, again, just to point out that, you know, we are continuing to follow the promise we made, and that we will be using the infrastructure sales tax to begin to make those repairs.
I think that people across the county are seeing that we are fulfilling our promises on that. We've got some big projects going on. Is there anybody else that wishes to pull anything for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Then we go on to public hearings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first public hearing is an item under the county attorney's office. It relates to Proposed Ordinance 19-13, which, if adopted, would amend Chapter 6 of the Code under Animals regarding community cats. Assistant County Attorney Heather Young will be presenting this item. It is a public hearing.
Good morning, or good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. As Mr. McIntyre stated, this is a public hearing on Proposed Ordinance Number 19-013, which would amend Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for implementation of the community cats program. You may remember that during the budget process, funding was allocated for the start of a community cats program, and in conjunction with that, there are several amendments to the Code of Ordinances that are required. Just a little bit of background, the community cats program provides for feral cats to be trapped, neutered, spayed, vaccinated, microchipped, and then released back into their colonies. These are cats that are, do not have an owner, they're living in the community. They sometimes become an issue, and this is a way to look at reducing and managing that population. The first change would be to add a definition of community cats, would be defined as a cat that has been sterilized, vaccinated, ear-tipped, microchipped, with chip information registered with the county, and then returned to outdoors to live free of human interaction. Although I will say that, as you're aware, there are people that do feed these, and that does lead to the development of the colonies. But they would not need to be registered under these proposed changes, which is something that someone who normally cares for an animal is required to do, but the community cats would not be registered, because we would have their microchip information as part of that process. We've also addressed the part about the ordinance is dealing with animals running at large, to require that it doesn't apply to community cats. If a community cat becomes a public nuisance, then the cat would be picked up by Animal Safety, taken to an animal care facility, and evaluated to determine whether it can be released back into the community, but not to the location where previously it caused a problem. And we've also taken some language from other entities to provide that it would not be released within two miles of a border with a neighboring county, because we don't want our cat colonies to migrate into another county and perhaps cause a problem for them. In conjunction with this, we're also amending the provisions in Section 6-25, which deals with animals running at large and euthanasia. Those are part of that process. Under PAX practices, the cats were often picked up and euthanized. This allows for the return of them to living in the wild, if you will, and also we provided that a veterinarian's certification is required in order for an animal to be euthanized in a shelter. So those are the changes that we have before you tonight. Notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the News Tribune on October 26, and staff is recommending approval as presented.
Okay, this item requires a public hearing. Madam Secretary, has anybody signed up to read?
We have, we have no one signed up for this particular public hearing.
Okay. Again, anybody wishing to speak? This is your chance. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Any questions? A motion from the board?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Y'all are slow tonight, I'm telling you.
I know.
I had coffee early.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Our next public hearing is B1, the Southern Trust Companies, which is an amendment to the official zoning atlas, rezoning.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Bethany Grubbs with the Planning and Development Services Department, presenting this petition on behalf of John C. Byers and Southern Trust Companies. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning from the Agricultural 1 to Industrial Light zoning district. Southern Trust Companies is a trust manufacturing facility and is a targeted industry for St. Lucie County. This item was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 17, and was forwarded to this board with a unanimous recommendation of approval. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11003 of the Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on October 25. A sign was placed on the property, and mail notices were sent out to the surrounding property owners within the required 500-foot radius. This is an aerial perspective of the property, and the area outlined in red indicates the subject site. The subject property encompasses 17.4 acres and is located at 6509 St. Lucie Boulevard at the southwest corner of St. Lucie Boulevard and Taylor Dairy Road. The property is a former citrus grove and remains undeveloped at this time. The future land use designation of the subject parcel is Town Villages and Countryside, and currently has a compatible zoning designation of Agricultural 1. This amendment proposes a zoning change to industrial light to allow future development of a new trust plant. This amendment will not create an isolated zoning district along St. Lucie Boulevard, as other industrial zone properties and developments exist within close proximity. Additionally, the comprehensive plan requires that new industrial light zoned lands have available to its central water services for both domestic and fire protection purposes. Both water and wastewater services are available to the site and will be provided by FPUA, who have signed off on this proposal as being available. The property adjacent to the site, north of St. Lucie Boulevard, is located within the airport mixed-use future land use area. This area is reserved for specific uses that are restricted to those of only commercial and industrial. Expansions of targeted industries such as this will help further the county's objectives to attain an airport connector interchange that will provide connectivity to the northeast portion of the county. Staff recommends that this board for, that this board approve the petition for a rezoning from Agricultural 1 to Industrial Light. And that concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant's agent are available to address any concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is a quasi-judicial public hearing, and so if the board has any disclosures concerning any contacts outside this, then now's the time to present those.
So I'll start, and I've only discussed this with staff.
Same here.
I have only spoken with staff on this one.
As I.
And as I.
And I guess it's my turn. For the record, my name is Dennis Murphy. I'm with the firm of Call, Paper, and Interpreting here in Fort Pierce, and we're representing tonight's Southern Trusts. Your staff did a very sufficient, eloquent, straightforward approach to explaining what we're doing here. Nothing to add to it. Respectfully request that you approve our petition for change in zoning, so we can bring in our new industrial building here. If you have any questions, I'd answer them.
Any questions?
This one's easy.
This item requires a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Madam Secretary, anybody signed up?
No, ma'am. No one signed up for this item.
Okay, seeing no one, we close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go on to the regular agenda, 10A.
Actually, Madam Chair, there's Item B2, which is the
You're right.
Petition to appeal a final order by the Contractors Examining Board. Madam Chair, even though this is an item under planning, they are actually a party to this, so with the board's permission, the county attorney's office will be presenting the opening of this item. This is a, as I said, an appeal. Ms. Catherine Barbieri will be handling the, again, the opening of the item. This is a, an unusual, it's, item in the code. I don't think we've ever done this before, so one of the things that we would like to do to begin before we start is, if this is, treat this as a quasi-judicial item, and again, if the board has any disclosures to make. I know that you all spoke with Catherine and myself about this. We are here lawyers, so that's not, that doesn't count. We talked about the procedural aspects of this, since it's such an unusual. I've been here a long time, and I don't think we've ever done this before, so we talked about it being a record case, a different kind of a thing than we're normally used to. But if you could individually, if you've talked to anybody outside of this, members of the public, a party, staff, other than Catherine and I, now would be of the public, a party, staff, other than Catherine and I, now would be the time to disclose.
Mr. Attorney, I have spoken to no one other than you and Catherine.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the same for me also, it's just the two attorneys.
Spoken to the two attorneys, ours.
Two attorneys.
And also two attorneys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the chair's and the board's permission, I'll turn this over to Ms. Barbieri, who will set the parameters for what we're, what we're doing.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. I'll give you just a brief, little bit of history, and then I'll give you the, what the code says. On September 18, a disciplinary hearing was conducted by the St. Lucie County Contractors Examining Board to hear a complaint filed by a citizen against Michael Miranda Doing Business as Group One Construction. After hearing where the board took testimony under oath, received evidence, and heard argument, the board found that Michael Miranda Doing Business as Group One Construction had a signed contract for construction of a single-family residence, didn't, not make payment for all of his subcontractor work, labor, and/or materials, including but not limited to non-payment for insulation to Builder Services Group Doing Business as Gale Insulation, which caused a lien to be recorded on the property owner's property. The board found that the circumstances warrant the suspension of Michael Miranda Doing Business as Group One Construction St. Lucie County Certificate of Competency for permitting privileges for 180 days. Michael Miranda Doing Business as Group One Construction filed an appeal with the county administrator as required by the code. The appeal is to this board, the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners shall review the petition at a public meeting within 30 calendar days from the filing of the appeal. That is why, why we're here tonight. Testimony at the public meeting shall be limited to 10 minutes per side unless an extension is granted by the board. The board's decision will be final for all purposes of administrative appeals. The Board of County Commissioners' review of the petition shall be limited to the record and facts which were available to the Contractors Examining Board at the time of the rendition of the decision appealed. The Board of County Commissioners shall revoke the decision and the examining board only if there's competent substantial evidence in the record that the decision fails to comply with this article.
So Madam Chair, just to sort of reiterate that and focus on that, this is a, what they call a record appeal, so we're not taking live testimony. This is, we're reviewing the record that was in front of the, and facts that were in front of the Contractors Licensing Board, and that's really all that we can consider. Things that happened before, after, really are not relevant to, perhaps important for other issues, perhaps. I'm not saying they're not important, but for our purposes, we're really focused on the record and the facts. You have a transcript in front of you. We have, both parties are represented by attorneys. As indicated, they each have 10 minutes to present, unless the board decides to expand that, so I would ask those attorneys, when they, when they're, is it their turn, if they need more time, or they need to identify that upfront, so we don't cut somebody off in the middle of an argument. Otherwise, we'll, we will be timing these. Madam Chair, typically, we allow the petitioner to go first, but that's what we'll do today. Staff has its own attorney, as the county attorney's office is representing the board and the Contractors Licensing Board. So there's an independent attorney, not affiliated with the county attorney's office, representing staff here. They will also have 10 minutes. I believe there's a gentleman here representing the petitioner.
Madam Chair, if I could ask Mr. McIntyre, I, because we haven't done this one before, I just wanted to walk through this a little bit slower than we normally would. We're not hearing any additional evidence, right? But it is a public hearing, so how do we manage the public hearing? Because it would be not
Well, it is an unusual circumstance, so I, Madam Secretary, I'm assuming we have people signed up to speak on this?
Yes, sir, we have eight signed up to speak.
Okay. My suggestion, again, I'm open to how this is handled. I think we should hear from the parties first, and then if, if the people want to talk, they can, again, but you're restricted to the record, okay? That's, that's what you're restricted to, the record and the facts that were in front of the Contractors Licensing Board. Any extraneous matters under our code are not, are not relevant to your decision. You have to focus on what, you're really hearing an appeal of that particular decision, and it's based on the facts and the evidence that was heard in front of that board, and that's what you have to focus on. Of course, the attorneys for each side are going to argue and focus your attention on their position, and you need to listen to that, but ultimately, that's what the decision of the board is. So again, it is a little unusual for this board. You're like an appellate, a set of appellate judges, and that's normally not what we do, but you need to focus on the record.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
My name is Owen Schultz. I represent Mike Miranda and Group One Construction in this appeal. The issue for this appeal is whether or not the Contractors Examining Board had sufficient evidence to find that Mike Miranda violated a specific provision of the code, county code. And so, to start, I want to concentrate on exactly what the allegations were in the notice of the hearing, of the disciplinary hearing, and the specific code that was referenced. And I'll refer to section 10-67 sub 9. This was the code that was alleged to have been violated by Mr. Miranda. And it says that an examining board shall have the power to revoke, suspend, or deny the issuance or renewal of a certificate of competency if it determines that the contractor or the business for which the certificate holder is a qualifying agent has committed any of the following acts. Three acts that subsection 9 speaks to. First, signs a statement with respect to a project or contract which falsely indicates that the work is bonded. Not an issue in our case. That was not the allegation in the notice, that was not the allegation. At the hearing, there was no evidence about it, and the, and the examining board made no ruling on that point. I'm going to skip a little forward on subsection 9. The third element, or not element, but the third option is to falsely indicate that workers' compensation and/or public liability insurance are maintained. Again, not an issue in this proceeding. That was not the basis for the disciplinary hearing, was not considered, was not ruled upon. So what's left, the second element, or the second option, is what we're here about today, and that's what the hearing was about. And it says, and again, we're talking about committing any of the following acts. Signs a statement with respect to a project or contract which falsely indicates that payment has been made for all subcontracted work, labor, and/or materials which results in a financial loss to the owner, purchaser, or another contractor. That's the sole provision of the code that was at issue at that hearing. Whether Mike Miranda signed a statement with respect to a project or contract which falsely indicates that payment has been made for all subcontracted work. I suggest to you that there was not a shred of evidence at that hearing that Mr. Miranda signed a statement falsely indicating that he had paid all of his subcontractors. There just simply was no evidence to support that finding. The presentation made to the board, the examining board, consisted of the complaint by the complainant, who were the homeowners, last name Showin, the Showins, a claim of lien that was filed by a subcontractor, the insulation subcontractor, a $2500 or $2700 claim of lien for the insulation work done on that project. Mr. Miranda filed a response, included some documents showing the board that he had not been paid yet from the bank for the insulation subcontractor's scope of work. There's no doubt that a dispute existed between Group One Construction and its customer, the Showins. There was no doubt that because of that dispute, the Showins had terminated their contract. There was no doubt that the insulation subcontractor filed a claim of lien. It was a basic garden variety construction dispute between the contractor and the owner. But what there wasn't was any evidence that Mr. Miranda signed a false statement. Look, a claim of lien isn't, first of all, a claim of lien isn't signed by, by Mr. Miranda. It's not his statement. It's a statement from a subcontractor saying, "I have a lien on this property, I need to get paid." Doesn't say anything about a false statement that Mr. Miranda made saying he had been paid. Never said that. It just never was done. It was never part of the evidence in the hearing, because it didn't happen. And what hap, unfortunately, what happens is, the, the core issue in that hearing, whether there was a signed statement falsely indicating that the subcontractor had been paid, sort of got, gets lost in the shuffle. Because what happens is, the hearing becomes a question of, well, why didn't you pay the subcontractor? Did you get a draw from the bank to pay the subcontractor? Why did they file a claim of lien? Those are probably all valid questions for a civil court in a lawsuit concerning a construction contract gone awry. But none of that has anything at all to do with whether Mr. Miranda violated the code that they alleged he violated. No one denies that the subcontractor wasn't paid. There was a construction dispute. But that doesn't matter. That's not what the allegation was against Mr. Miranda. And so for the board, the examining board, to find that he signed a false statement based on the evidence they had, can't be sustained. There was literally no evidence that he signed a false statement. So what did the examining board base its decision on? Well, if you read their order, they base it on the fact that Mr. Miranda entered into a contract with the homeowner to build the house. And their, the board's position was, well, if you didn't pay the subcontractor like you should have paid him under the contract, that is a false statement. It defies logic. First of all, and probably most importantly, the contract was not a record admitted at that hearing. The contract was never introduced to the board to see what it said. But secondly, it's a contract to build a house. The house hasn't been built yet. No one's been paid yet. Obviously, it's not a false statement indicating all the subcontractors have been paid for their work. What happened here, and if you review the transcript, many of the same people who have signed up to speak at this hearing were at that examining board hearing, disciplinary hearing. And they spoke during the public comment section, and they did an effective job of poisoning the well, so that those examining board members, and it's in the record, they were ready to pounce on Mr. Miranda before the hearing ever started, because they heard about other customers who were having problems with their homes. Wasn't part of the hearing, Mr. Miranda had no opportunity to present any evidence about those other people, yet it clearly, clearly affected the board. They wanted, and in fact, I'd like to read to you a specific portion of the record, so that you can see what I'm talking about. On page 21 of the transcript, the chairman says towards the bottom, "But again, I will say, we do hear your voice." This is during the public comment section. "We do hear your voice, and we do hear the pattern, and this is a lot of money. This is something that evidently has been done and perpetrated against a number of people that I can see, and it's added up to some large dollars." And then again, on page 24 of the transcript, again, at the public hearing, the public comment section, I'm sorry, before the hearing ever started, the chairperson again says, "And if we're in the industry, I'll tell you, our heart goes out, because we feel like we're being taken advantage of too, because we have our own licenses, we have our own insurances, and we're abiding by the law, and we definitely get upset, along with you, when we see those that think they can skirt the law and take advantage and be profitable in it. And that's definitely something that we are in opposition to as well."
Mr. Schultz, apologize for interrupting you. You heard the buzzer go off. Again, the code does allow for extra time if you ask for it. Do you have any, are you requesting additional time to close?
I would just request a couple of minutes, please.
That's up to the board. I would suggest that you do that.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, sir, you have two minutes to close.
Thank you. Setting that issue aside, the record at issue here is just the testimony by the parties at the examining board hearing, not the public comment section. And I will just conclude by saying, there was, again, not a single item of evidence in that hearing of a signed statement by Mr. Miranda, and that's the only issue that the board had to determine. They were mad because of these disputes, and they suspended his license for 180 days without any evidence whatsoever to support that code section. Their remedy is in civil court. If they want to dispute a contract, a breach of the contract that they may allege, they go to civil court, not here, not the Contractors Examining Board. They use that in the wrong manner. I'm going to ask the, the commission to find that there was absolutely no competent substantial evidence, in fact, no evidence, to support the finding of the board, and I ask it to revoke their decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeffrey Bass is my name. 46 Southwest 1st Street in the city of Miami is my address. I'm here as special outside counsel, representing your planning director and her department. This is an appeal. It is unusual for you. It is what I do every day. So I'm going to make a promise, I'm going to go as quickly as I can, if you promise to interrupt me if I go too quickly. I'd like to start where my opponent left off, these issues of prejudice relating to the public exercising their First Amendment right to speak to the examining board. Because this is an appeal, if there were an issue relating to that, my opponent was required to base his appeal on that issue. My opponent My appellant raised no concern about the fairness of the examining board hearing. My opponent did not object to the public speaking their right as they were allowed to do. So that issue is not before you. It has been waived as an appellate law. I tell you, he has not preserved it. He didn't object to it during the examining board hearing. He didn't raise it as a basis for his appeal this evening. We can put that aside. I'd like to start my presentation in chief where I would like you to end up and then work backwards on how we get there. I would like you to make a motion to deny the appeal, affirm the decision of the examining board based on the evidence that was presented to it. Now, because this is an appeal, the appellant has the burden to show reversible error by the board below. I could basically stop now because the appellant has failed to show a reversible error by competent evidence committed by your examining board consistent with the standard that Ms. Barbieri provided to you. But I'm going to go further because this is a public hearing, and I think it's important that the public understand the process that we're participating in together now so that everybody can leave here with confidence that your process ran its course. In this great country, our disputes are resolved civilly in a proceeding like this where each side is allowed to have a lawyer and to present their evidence. The hearing in this case took place before the examining board. The examining board is the board you constituted in the exercise of your legislative authority to be composed of experts in the area of construction, contracting, and permitting. You gave the examining board the authority to determine who was telling the truth and who was not. You gave the examining board the authority to make the decision. Your issue on appeal is very limited. Did they go rogue? Or did they base their decision on the evidence that was before them? Let me highlight the evidence that was before them. The board heard, and it's in your transcript from page 769 on to 78, a direct back and forth between the appellant and the chair where the appellant was asked a series of questions about how this happened. And the appellant gave the appellant's version of the facts, and the board did not believe them. They based their decision on the sworn testimony of the appellant himself. They based their testimony on the sworn, they based their decision on the sworn testimony of the homeowners who signed a contract with this man and testified to that. You can establish the existence of a contract by testimony. The homeowner is clearly competent to testify they entered into a contract. Perhaps my opponent misspoke when he said there was a dispute as to whether or not they were under contract. Let's be clear, there was no dispute about that. They would like to explain the dog eating their homework within the context of a dispute that they alleged to exist. But the appellant himself acknowledged the existence of a contract. The homeowners testified to the existence of a contract. There's no dispute that there was a contract. There's no dispute that the appellant signed a contract with the insulation committee and in that written contract promised to pay them. And there's no dispute that he didn't. And that contract is in the record. And there's no dispute that insulation subcontractor was not paid because there's a claim of lien. And even if there was a dispute about that, it's not for you to resolve that dispute. That dispute was resolved by the examining board. And your role here as the appellate body is to simply say, "Did they have evidence before them where they could conclude that there was a contract where payment was promised, and that promised payment was not made, and that injury occurred to the homeowners by virtue of that?" Of course, they did. That evidence was from the homeowner complainant. That evidence was from the appellant. There was documentary evidence provided by the investigator from the county. That was all aired out in a very long hearing. And I am very proud of the way the county conducted that hearing. They gave the appellant every opportunity to make his case. He showed up late. He showed up late, and I'd like to emphasize, he showed up after, after the public hearing, public comment portion. And I'd like to commend your county attorney that the public comment portion of that agenda was not the public hearing on this item. It was at the start of the agenda. Your county staff exercised discipline, and they kept this decision singularly focused on the issue that was before them. So your decision today is pretty simple. Is there evidence upon which the board could base its finding that qualifies as competent and substantial? We filed an extensive brief on this issue. Let me, if I may, just in layman's terms, tell you what competent and substantial evidence is. Competent and substantial evidence is relevant evidence. Is it, does it relate to the issue before the board? And does it come from somebody who's qualified to offer it? So ask yourself, is the complainant homeowner qualified to talk about their contract for the construction of their home? Of course, they are. Is the complainant homeowner competent to testify about the loss they suffered? Of course, they are. Who better? Is the claim of lien, claim of lien evidence of non-payment? Of course, it is. That's exactly what it is. And is there a contract in the record where the appellant promised to pay the insulating subcontractor? Yes. Is it signed by the appellant? Yes. Did he pay? No. But there's more than that. And I'd like to highlight that just for a brief moment for those who may be watching, for those who are here because it's compelling evidence that justifies the action, the likes of which I have not seen. The appellant gave a draw schedule. The draw schedule is evidence offered by the appellant. And what does the draw schedule show? The draw schedule shows that a draw was made for roofing. And yet, we heard testimony in the record from the homeowner that there was an intent to lien by the roofer because a draw was made and the roofer was not paid. We also see on the draw schedule in the record indisputably competent evidence, certainly can't be challenged by the appellant. They provided it, that work was performed by the insulation sub, but yet no draw was requested. So is this evidence? Of course, this is evidence. Is it relevant to the dispute? Of course, it is. Can you believe it? You better believe it. But the real issue is, did the examining board? And they did. And that's why although this is an unusual process in terms of you sitting as an appellate body, and the story is a bit convoluted, it was fully developed by your examining board. And it's not for you to backwind that here because the appellant gave you no reason to. I would suggest to you that this record is over-brimming with evidence to support the decision. Before I conclude, I do want to mention because I think it's vitally important, what you're not doing this evening. You are not revoking a state license. Not an issue. The appellant is free to work in the incorporated areas and in other counties. You are not prohibiting the appellant from continuing to work on permits in process. You are not. You, if you affirm, as you should, are simply suspending the appellant's right to get new permits for a 180-day period. Many of those days have already burned off. So at the end of the day, where you stand depends on where you sit. And where you sit this evening is an appellate body reviewing a very simple and very tragic record of very bad acts. And because that record speaks for itself, I need not elaborate it any further. Although I would be quite pleased to answer any questions that you have, I'm almost out of time. I would urge you to move to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the examining board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, commissioners, that concludes the party presentation that's required under the code. As the secretary indicated, there are eight people who have signed up. In Florida, we have a law. The state passed a law. We're going to be talking about it in a few minutes under a public comment discussion. But it basically allows the public to comment on items before you act. We're required to allow that. And so, and that's an important right for people to have. And it's one that even before the legislature passed that law, we did that uniformly. We didn't need the state to tell us to do that. We've done it for years. And have, of course, we'll continue to do it. With that in context, the board has the obligation, I think, to consider listening to the public comment. But again, I would caution you that your ultimate decision on this case has to be on the record on the things that were in front of the contractor's licensing board. You're an appellate body. This isn't like you're making a new decision like a zoning item or some issue that you're used to. You're an appellate body. Having said that, I would encourage the board to ask the secretary to call the public comments up.
Hey, I'm opening for public comments, Madam Secretary.
Yes, we have Pat Hughes.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us and allowing us to speak. Since I'm going first out of this group, I will say that many of us here are telling our story tonight in hopes that we can help not only remedy our situation but help future citizens of St. Lucie County from having to go through the same thing.
Ma'am, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Pat Hughes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We signed our contract with Group One on January 3, 2018. At that time, we gave Group One 10% of our deposit as well as our first two draws in cash for a total of $161,780. We were eager to get our house built, and we believed that this would get us a good start. I could go into a long story about all the delays and the construction problems that we've had with Group One, but I don't want to, I don't want to get the important parts of the story bogged down in those details. Have we had delays? Yes, absolutely. We're almost two years into this, and at this point, we're less than 50% done. Have we had construction issues? Absolutely. We're going to have to pay to get those things fixed. We have plumbing issues. We have electrical issues. We have a broken window, several things. What I really want to focus on is the financial impact that Group One has had on us. Since the initial draw, since the deposit and two initial draws, we have given Group One a third draw when they asked for it. So to date, we have given Group One $226,000, 70% of our contract price. And as I said earlier, we are less than 50% done. It's one thing to go through construction delays, labor issues, but then financial red flags started to pop up. On May 21, we received our first lien from a subcontractor for supplies that were furnished in February. That lien is for $1,800. Four months later, after Group One still had not paid that lien off, we have now gotten a lawsuit against us from that subcontractor. On July 11, 2019, we received our second lien, the amount of $24,716 from Stewart Paint Supply. And those are for items that were furnished back in April. Again, to date, Group One has not paid off those liens. I believe there's a Florida statute that says contractors have to pay off all liens within 75 days. And in both of our cases, none of that has taken place. Again, we are now being sued by one of those subcontractors. This is despite the fact that we have given Group One 70% of our funds. Is that my time?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that, you know, we finally in October had to hire a lawyer because we were being sued. And because of these financial red flags, have decided to terminate our contract with Group One. We have given him every opportunity to make things right, to get things paid off and to start, to continue finishing our house. But with none of that happening, we just had no choice. Prior to us canceling, again, Group One has not made any attempt to pay off our liens or finish our house. We have filed our complaints with the city. We are building in the city, so we filed our complaints with all the appropriate boards of the city, the police department, the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Department, the DBPR, as many of us here in this audience have all filed with all the appropriate places. With what we've already paid Group One to date and what we're going to have to pay twice in terms of the liens and what we're going to have to pay to have someone fix our house, we are definitely losing more than $100,000 easily in this transaction. So again, we're here today to hope that, you know, our voice and our story can help with future residents in our own case. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, the next person, please.
Lex Showin.
Hi, how are you? We're actually the Showins. My husband, Carl, and I'm Lex Laurie Showin. Okay, I guess I got to start going here. I'm going to get right to the point and save us all time. We all know why we're here. And it's Mike Miranda, Group One Construction. First of all, this is America, innocent until proven guilty. And all of us, 17-plus homes have proven Mr. Miranda guilty. He has taken advantage, taken money from the elderly, disabled American vets. How much more do we have to prove what this man has done to our lives? And we need help. No one's helping us. On our bank accounts, some of us have to even sell our homes because we can't even afford what's going on. We just want to live the American dream. We just want our houses built. That's all we ever wanted. We just want our houses built. That's it. And he's going to say, Mr. Miranda is going to say, "We're in a rush to get in our homes." And that is not true. We all know how long it takes to get into a home. Mr. Miranda says he still wants to finish our homes. Well, how is he going to finish our homes when he really doesn't have anybody working for him? I mean, he does have people working for him, but it's different people than originally. Like the tile guy. He's owed $150,000. SPS, Stewart Paint Supply, over $300,000. So he's going to different places, you know, because he can't go there because he's done, so he's got to go to the next place. So, you know, and at this point, now he's getting whoever he can afford to finish our homes. And that's not a custom home either. And, you know, the bottom line is, we just, we want our homes done. And, you know, for us, and we are, you know, we're the Showins, we had actually paid him, the roof had to be redone because he took eight months to complete it. He was paid from Seacoast Bank, $21,600. $11,000 was supposed to go to the roofer. Mr. Miranda never paid the roofer. Now we have to pay the roofer and pay double. How is this not illegal? How is this not criminal? And this has happened to all of us. And that's what those signs are for, of how much money that this is, this is what's happening. We just don't want this to happen to anyone else going forward, whoever, whomever. Because if you let Mr. Miranda continue, more lives will be destroyed and money will be taken. You know, I know you don't have the power to get our money back. I get that. But you have the power to do something. We've run the police department also, the whole nine yards, everything. And we just, we just need help. We just need help. And we don't want this to happen to anyone else. And also, and I'm sure you may be aware of this, but he was arrested related to issues that happened from building our homes. I don't know if you're aware of that. I don't know if my husband had anything to say.
My name is Carl Showin. I'm just going to state a couple of issues here. Honestly, no one should have to go through what we've been through trying to build a home. We all understand setbacks, but this has been blatant neglect, and it should not be tolerated. As a contractor, you're held up to certain responsibilities. The committee, the previous committee, they made a step in the right direction by suspending this man's license. It should have been revoked. Please do not take a step backwards by allowing this man and reinstating his license or, excuse me, his permitting privileges. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary, the next?
Dr. Verta Farrow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Verta Farrow. My husband and I, we're from Broward County. And I'm a former area superintendent in Broward County Schools, and I've done a lot of work with construction. But I've never seen anything like this or had anything like this happen to me. And after 45 years of work, and my husband and I- And after 45 years of working, my husband and I, we look forward to retiring to Port St. Lucie and building our final retirement home. And we are here today requesting that, as you hear Mr. Miranda's case, please hear from his customers the actions that got us all into this predicament. None of us wanted to be the victims of outright theft, losing our hard-earned money and not getting the homes that we were contracted for. I've given you a chart that we have collectively put together, and it tells the story of many of these homeowners in numbers and facts. The personal actions that Mr. Miranda committed toward my family is the theft of our money in the sum of $90,247, which took us a lot of years to save. Also, number two, not making a reasonable effort to meet the estimated construction schedule as promised. And also implementing what we can clearly see from this chart, a systematic and intentional scheme to defraud customers. Many of us senior citizens trying to retire of our hard-earned money and not deliver the good home that we thought we would get, and simply taking advantage of the elderly. We've collectively developed this chart and timeline that shows a complete timeline of negligence. It shows a summary of our story. The losses for many of our families here today are very, it's a very similar pattern. By the time we completed researching the events of the last few months, it was crystal clear to all of us, Mr. Miranda and his affiliates would went over the customers, take a very unreasonable amount of time to even apply for a permit. Then he would take another very unreasonable time to even start on a project after he finally got a permit. He would abandon many of the projects, and he would not return your money. We have, on this summary, we have requested five times personally a refund of our money because we had to cancel our contract with Mr. Miranda. And of the homes that you see on this chart, the quickest time that any of us ever received a permit after giving him the 10% was seven months obtaining, to build our homes. And the time for these permits ranged from seven months to never. We were one of the nevers because after nine months, we went to the Port St. Lucie Building Department and researched it. And according to, and Mr. Miranda would say he was ready to go, he wasn't ready to go. According to a permit search that we pulled, we didn't, we were not even on the list for permit when he had been telling us all along that any day, any day, we would start. He only applied for our, we were surprised to find that he only applied for our permit seven months after we started. And we thought we were ready to go, ready to go. So if you look at this schedule, you're gonna see many homeowners, and you'll see this clear pattern. In fact, one of the homeowners, the first one on the list, the sum is so big, and she's so traumatized that she couldn't even come to speak for herself. So I'll just let you know, that's why all of us are summarized here. He has mismanaged all of our money that we gave him, and there's not one family among the people that are on this list that received the services that we paid for. There's also not one family here that has received a return of the money for the services that he didn't render for us. When we went to the Port St. Lucie Building Department to shockingly find out that he had only applied for this permit after many months of us coming from Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, driving up here, on numerous occasions, they would tell us any minute, he just, he led us on. He stalled for so long that he never even started our home, and that's when we had to cancel it so that we wouldn't lose so much more money as we watched our friend, new people that we never knew before, but as we watched people lose money and had such bad craftsmanship. We are concerned about so many complaints that involve exploitation of the elderly. If you look around, there are many senior citizens here, disabled veterans, et cetera. He exploited this community. We ask for your assistance with complaints so that future homeowners will not have to face the likes of Mr. Miranda. And we're asking for him to face the consequences of his actions. As of today, we don't have a home. Our lot was cleared and partial forming boards were put in place. That our lot is now overrun with weeds, but most of all, we don't have an accounting from Mr. Miranda of where our money is or when it will be returned. We worked to all of these, one last sentence I wanna say.
Okay, I just need you to wrap up.
I will.
Thank you.
We worked for many years. We worked for many years to save money. We now have to go into our grandkids' college fund to try and recover because Mr. Miranda took our money and mismanaged it. And all of this, when we talk about the Florida statutes, he followed none of them. So we ask for your help, we need your help, so that others won't have to face this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, the next?
Sandra Lane.
Hi, my name is Sandra Lane. It's been over two years since we signed our one-year contract with Group One Construction and Mike Miranda. Multiple things were done wrong with the house, some of the things have been corrected, some have not. When we would ask him to correct it, he would threaten us with placing a lien. He has also told us on numerous occasions to release the final payment, and then he will complete our house. We signed our contract on 10/10/2017. He deposited our down payment check of $23,000 on 10/12/17. He received over $17,000 for an advance from my bank on 12/28/17 at the closing. He did not apply for a permit with the city until 3/6/18, and then the permit was not issued until 6/11/18 due to him not supplying the needed documents. He was given a CO on my house on 5/13/19, but never came back to complete the house. There's not been any work done since the first week of June. I have gotten an estimate to finish the house and correct things that are wrong, and it's There's only $27,000 left, which is the 10% that the bank has held back. He's been given over $353,000 for my house. He signed bank affidavits with each draw stating that he had paid all materials and subcontractors up to that point, and he did not pay them. We have multiple unpaid invoices, notice to owners and liens from subs totaling over $51,000, and we continue to receive more every couple of weeks. We had a lien placed on our house in the amount of $10,220 that was filed on 5/16 for the landscaping and papers. And then he was arrested on October 30th regarding this lien. There is proof that he was paid for by my bank and did not file it. Even after he was arrested for it, he still has not paid this lien. I just paid for it out of my bank account, which is now down to $17,000 to finish the house, which is gonna cost me $63,000. He filed a lien against my house on 7/29/19 for the amount of the final bank draw. To me, from what I read, this is supposed to be a false lien. He did not complete the house. We had to hire our lawyer to try to get him to finish the house and to fight the liens costing us over $8,000 in fees so far. My attorney sent him a letter on August 9th with options to complete the house and a list of what needed to be completed and things to be corrected. He chose not to respond in the 45 days. I filed a contest of lien for the lien that he placed on my house. He did not respond to the county in the 60 days that were required for that either. He had a lawyer contact my lawyer on August 2nd, once he found out we were all speaking at the city licensing board. His lawyer requested a meeting and walkthrough with me and my lawyers at that time. Before this, he had no intention of completing our house or paying the subs. We have filed complaints with the DBPR, the Attorney General, the Port St. Lucie City Licensing Board, the police. The police are still investigating. Like I said, he was arrested on one count related to my case. The city board has given us letters that they will not investigate. We are not allowed to speak before the city board officially. So we're getting no help there, and most of us are within the city. We've been paying a mortgage since January because the construction loan part ended. We can't live in the house or get homeowners insurance because the house isn't complete, and they want pictures to prove that it's complete. We can't get a release from the bank to have a new contractor to finish the house without him authorizing and the bank having a sign of release that we won't sue them because of them releasing the money to him. And we'd have to borrow more money from them in order to do it. I sent him a termination letter on November 1st and received a response from his office that was very nasty, accusing me of falsely having him arrested and a whole bunch of other stuff. There are 14 other similar situations with this builder. He should not have this suspension lifted. He has made no attempts to pay any of the subs or the liens. He continues to blame the homeowners and the subs for the situation. He hasn't even tried to correct what he's done. He needs to answer for the liens placed on our houses, filing a false lien, signing false affidavits, abandoning our houses. He has created hardship on all of us and should not be considered for any relief of penalties because he continues to do it. He could easily, he's had plenty of time to make this situation right and just chose not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, the next person on?
Phil and Ingrid Jim Rusty.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Jim Rusty. This check for $23,000, $23,750 given to Mike Miranda on July 16, 2019, was cashed at a check cashing store in Jupiter, and the money went straight into his pocket, not into our house nor to any of his subcontractors. We signed a contract with Group One Construction, January 24, 2018, to build our custom home. In the contract, it states that the house will be completed within one year from time of permit issuance. Problem number one, nowhere in the contract does it say Group One can get this permit at his leisure, maybe two months to a year or more. Problem number two, Group One does not have to pay his subs after the customer has paid him. Statues are ignored, and the subs don't care since they can lean the customer's property. Problem number three, at his leisure, Group One can call in and pass an inspection every six months, do nothing on your house for six months, and continue this for up to three years. Problem number four, customer sends complaints to every agency in the state and the police and everybody. Their answer is, it's a civil matter. I'm sorry, but the contractor has stolen thousands of dollars, and I have to lose more money to an attorney? All the agency's replies are the same. This corruption has been going on for decades. Isn't it about time we put an end to this corruption? This man is not qualified to run a business nor construct a house. By the way, this isn't his first rodeo. He purposely stole money from all of us for the past years, and he should have been stopped sooner. The city refused our complaints until we overwhelmed them by numbers and forced them to listen to us. They still claim no authority, but they should have suspended giving him permits. Of course, for the, the fear of God is given to us by Group One that we can't cancel our permit, our contract. He has every right to cheat and steal, and we have none. We'll be 80 years old in a few months, and we've lost over $40,000 and still counting. Thank you for listening.
Madam Secretary.
Scott and Belinda Geim.
My name is Scott Sim. My wife, Belinda, and I drove up today from Miami, Florida, where we live. We contracted with Group One, 8/24/2018, to build a new home. It was our dream home. We saved up our money. We wanted to retire in this municipality. Not sure that's gonna happen. Not because it's not a wonderful place, but because of the experience that we've been having or currently having. We gave Group One, Mike Miranda, we gave them $50,000 as an initial, $55,000 as initial deposit. More recently, and this is something that we do have a little bit of a beef with, with St. Lucie, is, you know, the second part, he hasn't built anything, by the way. It's 15 months, we have a piece of land, maybe, I don't think a rock has been moved on our property. So he has $110,000 of ours, and I don't even have a permit. The second part of our deposit was subject to him delivering us a permit and all the fees paid. He, I heard his attorney talking earlier about a signed statement, a false statement. Well, he did sign something. He signed a check to the county for our impact fees of $22,000, which triggered our condition to pay him his second deposit, which was $50,000, which we did. So now we're into him for $110,000. Just one problem, his $22,000 check bounced. And that's in your county, that's in your building and zoning department. So I don't have a permit. I don't, I have 15 months, $110,000, not a shovel in the ground, and this guy's over here, you know, hiring high-priced attorneys to get his way out of the situation. $110,000, I'm out. You know, my wife and I worked for 15 years to save up that money so we could build our dream home, our retirement home in St. Lucie County. So we do, we do wanna know what the county's gonna do about that because they did issue a permit, and no one notified us from St. Lucie that our check, that his check had bounced. I might be still paying him money, he wanted more money. He told me I needed to pay the contractors directly, probably because he owed him money on other jobs. But St. Lucie County did let us down. Your building department let us down. No one notified us. It had been four or five weeks before we finally found out that his $22,000 check to you bounced. We only found out because a, one of the subs was down there, and they were mumbling around, and they found out that he had bounced that $22,000 check. I'd like to know what you're gonna do about that. You know, that is a signed statement, a promise to pay, $22,000 check. So needless to say, we're, you know, I didn't know I got arrested. I don't know why I got arrested, I don't know. But my understanding is if you write a bad check, it's trouble damages, it's a federal offense. So I'd be very curious to see how St. Lucie County addresses that because you hurt somebody who was gonna be a resident of your municipality. He claims he's owed the money that we paid him. He says he wants to use the money, the $110,000, for his overhead. He says he wants to, he wants to be paid for his overhead, and he hasn't started the job. It's a joke. I mean, the guy, and my understanding, I found this out recently, was, you know, seven, eight years ago, he had a bankruptcy essentially for probably doing the same thing. So, you know, like other people have mentioned, you know, this guy, it's like a pedophile, you know? You can't stop him. You know, they're gonna go out and keep doing it again and again. So, you know, do what you gotta do on this, but you got a bad actor on your hands.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, are there any more cards?
Yes, ma'am, we have two more. Jerry and Sylvia Lawson.
I'm Jerry Lawson, this is my wife Sylvia. We moved here from Virginia about six years ago. We love this city. We thought that maybe we would try to build our dream home as well. So it's my fault that we're in this situation because I went to buy an office chair, and his office was right next to the building that I bought the chair from. So I went in there, talked with them. At the time, I talked with Roger Moore, his associate, who we found out has filed bankruptcy. They split ways, and he filed bankruptcy, so we couldn't go out to him. They split ways, and he filed bankruptcy, so we couldn't go out to him. So I told my wife about it. We went there, we talked to them, and Roger was the spokesperson. Roger was really smooth about his, with this conversation. So they talked us into purchasing through them. Now, I'm going to read to you so I don't forget anything, the events that happened with us. On February 14, 2018, my wife and I signed a contract with then TC Custom Homes and now Group One Construction and Development under Mike Miranda and Roger Moore to build a 2,100 square foot single-family home for $248,000 with the notice of commencement of August 2018. Ms. Miranda asked us for a 10% deposit of $24,800, which we wrote a check out for that amount. Initially, we were told that the customer occupancy would be June 27, 2018, which meant we didn't have a lot of time to set a house we were currently occupying, that we did not have a mortgage payment on. I just want to make sure you understand. We didn't have a mortgage payment on the house that we were in. We put the house on the market immediately. Later, we were told that the new CO would be September 2018. So we took the house off the market and relisted it to reflect the new CO. The plan was to sell our current home and use the money to pay for the house Group One Construction was building for us. So we tried time, we tried to time the sale and the move-in into our new home closed together. So then, the only work that was done was to clear, by then, the only work was done but was the clearing of the land, the pouring of the slab and the framing. Weeks and months went by, and there was no work being done. We learned much later that the permit was pulled, wasn't pulled until August 18, 2018, six months later. Ms. Miranda kept telling us the architect was slow and kept moving, making mistakes with the drawing, which claimed, which he claimed delayed the work effort. In the meantime, on June, January 2019, Ms. Miranda asked for the first draw of $126,548. So we gave it to him, and Mr., and then May, Ms. Miranda asked for a second draw of $18,500. We finally sold our home and rented a home, we sold our home, and we rented a room in a home that a guy wanted, initially wanted us to rent for a year, but he had sympathy on us, and he let us rent for three months because Ms. Miranda was saying he gave us a new CO, and we said, "All we need is three months." Well, that didn't happen. We were paying $800 a month for this room. After three months, the owner wanted us to sign at least for a year, which we refused to do, so we had to find another place to live. Some friends offered to let us move in with them for a few months because Ms. Miranda, again, gave us a new CO for another two months. That didn't happen. So we, at this point, we had no idea when we were going to move into our house. So we told, we told our friends, thanked them for allowing us to stay there. So now we're in an apartment, paying $1,200 a month, and a storage we're paying $250 a month for. And so almost daily, we attempted to get answers on why no work was being done on the property, and because we were inquiring so much, Ms. Miranda's office manager, Joan Thayer, sent my wife an email message saying to stop harassing them. We're harassing you. So I started going by his office unannounced because he stopped answering his phones, they stopped answering emails. And so one day, my wife and I went there, and, well, we had gone before, and each time we walked in there, he would leave. He would get up out of his chair and walk out of his office. The last time I went there, I caught him a caw as he was walking out the door. He turned around.
Mr. Lawson?
He wanted to come at me. I wanted him to come at me. But my wife pushed me back, his office manager pushed them back. So I'm going to make this real short. He owes us $75,000. We have liens. We just got from one company that we're being sued now. They're trying to take our home.
SPS.
SPS. We owe them $25,000. We paid him for this. And in order for us to complete our home where we started, we're now out of $101,000 that we have come out of our pocket with. And up to date, we've given him $271,000. And we're still not done with our home. We're not, we haven't moved in. I had to rent a bobcat to just to knock the weeds down so it wouldn't grow up over my We want you guys to do something about this man. Like that you said before, he's like a pedophile. He's a cancer in St. Lucie County. If we reinstate his permit, other people are going to be here later on. And guess who's going to be there to support them? We are.
Mr. Lawson, I need you to wrap up, please.
We're done.
Thank you. Okay, and the next one?
We have Ulysses Cesto?
Good evening. My name is Ulysses Cesto. I'm the owner of U.M. Kitchen Cabinets. I've dealt with some of these guys, some of these previous homeowners or some of these homeowners with some of their houses, doing their kitchens. Some I haven't gotten a chance to meet because we never made it to that stage. Some of them we spoke about, we went over layouts, we went over a bunch of different things, but we just never got to that point. Mr. Miranda owes me about just over $30,000. I have filed some liens in some of these homeowners' homes. I contacted every single one of these homeowners before we filed liens, just to go ahead and inform them of what was going on, go ahead and inform them that unfortunately, it's the only way for me to protect myself. We're a small business. We, it's me, my wife, and my son. We almost lost everything because of Mr. Miranda. We got to the point where we had to sell, first off, we had to sell a lot of things. I had to take a lot away from my kids to be able to continue living somewhat of a lifestyle. In various occasions, I tried contacting Mr. Miranda and basically begging him, and I've got text messages to prove it. I don't have to sit behind a lie or sit behind any of that. I begged him, "Please, I need payment. I need to go ahead and pay bills. I have things to pay." I get emails from companies that I own materials to threatening to sue me. At this point, we're at a point where I really don't know what to do anymore. Last email I received, or one of the last emails I received from them was August 15 from his assistant, I guess, Joanne Thayer. She went ahead and continued to bother me and ask me for what my invoices were and how much we owed. I went ahead and told her, I said, "Ms. Thayer, we've told you several times what my invoices are, how much we're owed." It's gone back and forth many, many times. She went ahead and said, "Well, we need to know, we need to know." So finally, I went ahead, I said, "Okay, when I have some time, I'll pull some numbers together and let you know what it is." I went ahead and got back to her, and I informed her of what I was owed. I said, "It's just over $30,000." She said, "Okay, thanks for letting me know." I said, in an email responding, and I've got the paper here with the email, "Why am I getting asked these questions? Has Mr. Miranda finally decided to pay his bill?" John Thayer's answer was, "Ha, ha, ha. No, the company was just asking for it." What does that tell you, guys? Honestly, does that tell you that this man has any intention of paying what he's owed or what he owes people? I don't think so. Now, if we go ahead and let this guy continue doing the things that he's doing, it's going to end up putting one of us, which are the victims, in a position where we're going to end up being accused of something that we don't want to do. Because if we put you, if I back you up against a corner sooner or later, you're going to bite. And I believe that every single one of us would do the same thing. So I just, I don't think it's fair. Where is my defense? Who defends me? I got to go spend a ton of money on an attorney, which I can't afford because of the situation he's put me in? So who defends us? Who defends me as a contractor? Yeah, I can file a lien on these customers, but what does that do? It affects the customer, it doesn't, it doesn't help anyone. So who defends us? Who helps us out? I can, I've got a contractor, I can go file, take my test, file for my contractor's license, go take money from a bunch of people, and then just decide I'm not going to continue building their homes, and that's it? Is it that easy? And who defends these people? Who defends the subcontractors? Who defends the homeowners? We've got to go spend tons of money hiring attorneys to go ahead and defend us when no one else is doing anything to go ahead and defend us? Yes, they suspended his license temporarily, which, again, I personally believe it should have been permanently revoked, in my opinion. But it's been temporarily suspended for six months, whatever it is. Now, after six months, what happens? It gets reinstated? He continues to pick up draws and deposits from other people? He continues to go ahead and affect other people and do the same exact thing that he's done to all of us, to other people? When is it enough? When do we say, "Okay, this is enough. This person doesn't need to have a license"? You know, I mean, I guarantee you that, you can speak to any one of these homeowners that I've spoken with, and I'm more than happy to finish anything I need to finish in their homes. My only question to homeowner and contractor have been, who's going to pay me? I can't come out and continue doing work for free. Some of these homeowners, their house is pretty much almost done, but I can't go back and continue working for free. I've got a family to maintain, I've got bills to pay, I've got everything to pay, just like everyone else. Like I said, here was the answer, guys. Ha, ha, ha. No, they just wanted to know what you were owed. What does that tell you? Is there any intent of any kind of payment here? I don't think so. Thank you guys very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Dan, are you going to address us with the, with our charge?
Yes. Madam Secretary, is there anybody else signed up?
No, sir. We have no one else who turned in a request to speak form.
Okay.
Then I will close public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, we'll go back to the beginning of when we started off on this. We have a very limited function here. We're serving as an appellate board. Our focus is on the record and whether there's evidence in the record to support the decision of the Contractors Licensing Board. So you need to focus on the record that was presented to you, also the arguments that were presented by both parties. That would be Mr. Schultz and Mr. Bass. Those are really the factors that you should consider in your deliberations tonight and determine whether there's competent evidence or not, and then you should make the appropriate motion based on your decision. If you have any questions, certainly, you know, we can try to answer those at a staff level, or if you have any questions of the parties, that this would be the time to identify those.
Any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I want to make sure that I'm clear that after this is done, I'd like to have a conversation with the attorney as to what the audience has questions about because I'm not going to consider, because we are charged to stay to this case specifically. But when this case is completed, whatever it ends up being, I think we need to give direction where the state comes in.
Any further comment, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. After considering the record presented to the Contractors Examining Board, an argument of counsel on the standards of review as set forth in the Section 10-68 St. Lucie County Code and compiles laws, I hereby move that the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners find that there is competent substantial evidence in the record to support the decision of the Contractors Examining Board so that the decision should be affirmed.
Second.
Madam Chair, for clarification? The maker of the motion mentioned Section 10-68, but omitted print G.
G. I'll add that to the motion. Sorry.
Any further comment? Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdofsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
The board's decision then effectively denies the appeal that we've upheld the decision, the board has upheld the decision of the Contractors Licensing Board by a vote of five to zero.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I've recently taken a real estate class, and some of the conversations, yeah, I know.
Oh, dear.
And some of the conversations that I'm hearing, the Department of Business and Professional Regulations is an area in which complaints and issues of licensing can be heard. I just happen to be having a conversation and talking about the next Florida Real Estate Commission is also meeting in November, November 18th and 19th. And again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, and I don't advise anybody to be so, but I don't know if the Florida Real Estate Commission and/or Department of Professional Regulations is the best place to go. There are other state agencies because there are rules and regulations that need to be adhered to, and unfortunately, we are limited to our powers. So I would certainly recommend the state's elements to assist.
Any further comment? I'm just going to say for all of you people, I understand what, where you sit. I, in my past life, was on the other side, being the banker that was making disbursements. I understand that most of this would be seen in a civil court, and unfortunately, that's... Madam Attorney, that is their option, correct?
Right there. I think we need to be careful here of what we say, and we're not really providing advice. That's really not the role we're in. And I know it's an awkward situation because we normally do that, that's who we are. But we just heard an appeal, we were focused on the record. There are certainly other venues available. There's been discussed by both sides, actually, of different alternatives, but our role is, as somebody has already said, is limited. And in this case, we're just the appellate body. We're reviewing the licensing board decision. Clearly, there are other avenues that have been discussed, but, and perhaps there can be offline discussions with staff and the people here, with the county staff and perhaps the sheriff's office and anybody else that, I'm certainly not trying to suggest that we're not interested in helping people, but, you know, our role here is really limited tonight. So I would encourage the board to just kind of move to the next item.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go on to the regular agenda, item A. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If we could just wait a minute and get people clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Five minutes.
Do you want, okay, we're going to take a 10-minute, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is item 10A1, concerns public comment. Just in way of background, the board, we did discuss this at an informal. To be fair, it was the eighth item on an eight-item agenda, so it was at the end, and we talked about it. We first talked about this as a board back in 2016. Really, only two of you were present and it was in October of 2016. And, and what happened, up until that point, we really didn't have any regulations of public comment other than restricting the amount of the time. But we had, without naming names, we had a candidate, candidate A, coming up and talking about candidate B, neither of whom at the time were on the Board and was using public comment to disparage that particular candidate. And at that time, Commissioner Lewis, at the time Commissioner Paula Lewis, asked that the county attorney's office develop some language to address the situation, which is what we did. And then what we did in 2016 is we, we added a sentence that we have today that says, "Comments may pertain to any matter related to the Board's duty as the county's governing body. General comments in support or opposition to candidates for public office are not pertinent to the Board's duty." So that's, that was adopted by the Board at that time, five to zero. And that's what's currently in our, in our particular item protocol that we have, that the Board follows. We, we've had some other issues come up where we've had, you know, members of the public who are running for office identify themselves as candidates. We have dealt with that in different ways. And so it seemed like what we, it might be a good idea to address the issue. We can certainly address it again in an informal if the Board wants more discussion on the issue. If, if you feel like we're not ready to make a decision, then that's fine. And we want to make sure we get it right, that's fine. What I did is I attached a couple of items. One is a judgment in favor of Palm Beach County on the issue of, of the consent agenda and public comment, which Palm Beach County prevailed, although I will tell you that that judgment was appealed. So we'll have to wait and see. And then I attached a case out of Cocoa Beach. And it was a case involving political comment. And in that case, Cocoa Beach restricted not only comments, verbal comments, but conduct. T-shirts, signs, buttons. They basically established a campaign-free zone. A gentleman, I guess, attended a meeting, had a T-shirt, was asked to turn it inside out, objected to that, was ultimately, I guess, escorted from the dais and sued the city, went all the way up to the appellate court in Atlanta in our circuit. And the court there, if you read the case, basically said that the city had the right to establish a campaign-free zone, notwithstanding the First Amendment. So there, there's that. We also looked at other communities to try to figure out what, what other folks are doing. And really, other than us and Martin County, nobody else really directly regulates political comment. Martin County does prohibit politicking, which they define. We also went further than that to address the media coverage of public comment. And again, we, 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 video and audio public comment. In other words, it's part of our meeting. There are two communities that differ from that somewhat. The city of Fort Pierce is, I understand it, under public comment, they allow audio, but not video. And then the school district has their public comment at the end. They're, they have, you can sign up as a speaker, but if you, if you're not scheduled, then you're at the end and they shut their meeting, media coverage off. So there is no video or audio of that. Other than that, everybody that we surveyed, and these were the Treasure Coast communities, provide video and audio of that. So with that, with that in mind, it seems like, the one other thing I'll suggest is that whatever we do, whatever we decide to do, we have to be consistent in our application of it. I think from a legal perspective, we could, we could simply allow the political comment, if that's what we want to do. But again, we have to allow it for everybody. If we want to restrict it further than what we do now, again, we need to be consistent. We could, I'm not suggesting we do this. I think, you know, just people have asked what my opinion is. I think Cocoa Beach went too far for us. I mean, the idea of banning T-shirts and, and buttons and signs, we saw that tonight. That's too far, I think, for where we are. That's just, but there's some danger, that's a judgment call for the Board. And if you disagree with me, and I don't get to vote, but I'm just suggesting, you know, I put the case out there because it does validate our legal ability to, to regulate this. Again, Madam Chair, I'm open to suggestions. If the Board wants to have more discussion on this at an informal meeting, we can certainly do that.
Comment, questions?
Madam Chair, mine's going to be comments at this point. You know, one of the things that I have always taken a great deal of pride in, I think it's well earned, is that the county commission in the past and present has always worked very, very, very hard on setting a decorum that we like to have our meetings conducted in. And sometimes in, sitting on this side of the dais, there's a lot of times we probably each have had to pierce our tongue with our teeth, you know, to make sure that we follow that rule. Unspoken rule, if you will. And, you know, I take it very, very seriously on this side of the dais of conducting the county's business, because that's my job. And the decorum and so forth needs to follow with that. And if we have to keep that decorum by many times biting our tongue, then I think there's times that it's okay to ask the public to abide by the same level. And I'm not saying they can't say anything, but I don't think there's anything wrong with making sure that the meetings are held strictly to what's in front of the Board, that the Board has control over. So to me, it's out of place and it's not an all-the-time thing. That's just it, it's just like it's during election years. Let's be honest with it. That's when it happens. For candidates to come up from any level and identify themselves as a candidate for, that to me is, and I don't like that word Martin County uses, politicking, if you will. That's not pertinent to what we do as an elected official. The campaign stuff really should be kept outside, in my personal opinion. I agree with what Dan said, though I think, you know, telling people they can't wear certain clothes in their house is a little bit overboard, you know? And I see nothing wrong with if they've got a little sign, you know, a little button on them when they're under, it's public speaking, that part I don't have a problem with. But it's the direct, how do you call it, naming of or talking about an upcoming election, you know, that I just think is uncalled for, because we, on this side of the dais, have nothing to do with that. We may be running, but we can't even sit here and talk about that when you're doing the county's business. Me personally, I wouldn't mind including under public comment, you know, something, even making it a little bit stronger. But again, going back to what Dan said, every person's going to have to follow suit with that, you know, meaning the Board. So I'm going to ask you, Dan, you know, it's almost like water under the bridge, if you will, or the horse is out. When they make the announcement, I'm candidate so-and-so, at what point do you say, no, you can't say that?
Right.
Or, I mean, that's kind of like, because we ask for their name and so forth for the record.
Right.
When, how do we address it?
Right, I have a suggestion for that, for the Board to consider. It's different than what we've done. But what we could do is add the one sentence. I attached some suggested revisions. Just under public comment, I added, "This includes any speaker identifying himself or herself as a candidate for public office." One thing that might help is for somebody, and I'm not, perhaps in this order, the secretary, the administrator, or me, in that order, could, could, could read into the record the, the public comment at the beginning, you know? In other words, we could just set, it's, it's a paragraph, it's, it's not that, just to sort of set the stage so that it's clear that before we do public comment, this is, or we could, we, if we don't read it, maybe we could put it on the screen, you know, put it, put it up there and just refer to it. These are the rules that we have, so that before we start it, that, that's the better approach. You know, it's hard to gavel somebody down, it's, it's not who we are, you know?
Well, that goes back to the decorum, that's why I was asking the question.
Right, we don't want to be rude to people, you know? We don't want to interrupt anybody, that's, again, not who we are. But if somebody is, is doing something that's not allowed, I mean, you have no real choice. I mean, we, we had the situation where the attorney today just kind of went on and it was, you know, I don't interrupt people, so we let him go. And then I said, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but, you know, your 10 minutes are up. So again, it's, it's a difficult situation to be in. But I think, at least the, the Board at the time, we just, we don't, we don't deal with campaign issues. We're not set up for that, there's forums to do that. There's a league, there's televised, there's homeowners association meetings. That's the appropriate time to deal with campaign issues. We don't have anything to do with that. So again, a suggestion would be to perhaps put it on the, on the screen or have somebody in addition to that or in lieu of that, just address it at the beginning of each meeting. I mean, that's a suggestion. I don't know if Mr. Tipton has any others.
Give us your order.
I agree with Dan. No, I, I would, I would say that those are all good comments and it is a difficult spot. But I think if we can, if we start by putting it up on the screen in front of everybody, and I think we can see how it goes from there.
Madam Chair, I agree with Commissioner Hutchinson. And the same thing with the shirts and the buttons. The only thing I would tend to say that I would not like to see is people with campaign signs with sticks. I just think they could be projectiles. Someone could actually, not saying it would happen, but there's a possibility. Somebody gets into a heated argument and, you know, if you want to bring your signs in, I don't know if you have to make it a certain size, but no sticks, if that makes any sense. Because to me, then you're going to have to have law enforcement telling them, hey, you can't carry these sticks in here, because they could become a weapon. No, I don't know. Just trying to think outside the box here, but...
Commissioner Townsend, you look like you wanted to speak.
You know, for, I have mixed emotions about this. I agree with Commissioner Hutchinson, and I do for any. But, but the other side of that is, this is the people's and taxpayers' chambers and there's the freedom of speech. And we cannot rebut anything said under public comment. So if somebody gets up there under public comment and says something, whatever they want to say, we cannot respond during public comment. So I'm kind of torn between this, because I know that it's something that should be done and there's a level of respect. But again, I'm glad you brought it up, Commissioner Hutchinson, like how do you police it? Like if it starts? So I would agree, Dan, that maybe in campaign years, when this becomes the worst, that maybe the chair or the attorney says, you know, and to not single that out, but to just say, reminder to turn off your cell phones or silence them and to be mindful that if you are here to campaign, you know, have some verbiage in there so that it's something addressing the cell phones and that to be made public and it's not just singling out that issue. The other thing I think we could do also is where we have in our agenda, with the Pledge of Allegiance, we go into approval of minutes, proclamations, and then public comment. I think a public comment was after the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a lot of people that would say what they wanted to say and then they would leave. I think as people sit here and they have to go through sometimes a long time of going through the proclamations and presentations and stuff, that just kind of adds a little bit more fuel, I think, as they're sitting there thinking about things. So also, for me, public comment, I would want to hear before the minutes, because what if somebody has a public comment and something they want to say that reflects the minutes? Or they want to make a comment about somebody that's going to be brought up in a proclamation? It gives them the right to be able to make a comment pertaining to the minutes of their proclamation. So I, I would even like to have possibly the public comment moved up to get that after the Pledge of Allegiance to open up the meeting. I think that's something that could kind of help things along as well, but...
Madam Chair, and I think you're right, Dan, it was eight-item informal and admittedly, it's taken me a while to, to bring that meeting back. But, but I think that the, you know, from a campaign standpoint, I think electioneering laws come into play. Those who are running for office, they have a responsibility for how their signage is written and what is written on the signage. Disclaimers that go apart that. Their radio advertisements have a certain level of responsibility. And, and I can't remember what the state agency is. And I was at a conference recently, and I should know that. But anyway, I think we should get an opinion from the, the elections, the state's elections supervisor group on electioneering laws or how that decorum should be managed. Because it's, it's got to have come to them at some point. So, you know, I don't have a lot of issue with all of this. I just, I think that, you know, from an electioneering standpoint, there are rules in the state's campaigning components. And if it's an issue there, then we should get an opinion from them, how we should handle that type of situation.
So I'm hearing a lot of different comments. It has always been my opinion that we perform a board meeting with business of the county. And that, that is the way we should handle it. We all sit on other boards. We all have boards where there's a lot of discussion or there's public to be heard. And again, there is a decorum. A respect, not necessarily for us, but for the process. And many times, what that does is disrupt our focus on the board meeting. And that is what we're here for. We are here to do the business of the public. That's pretty much what I have to say about it. If, Dan, if you want to...
Just some suggestions and based on what I've, what I've heard. It seems to me like perhaps we're not ready to do too much at this point, if anything. What we could do of one or two things, we could keep it the same. I know, not make any changes right now with the language, but put it on the screen in advance. Or as an alternative, just deal with the one sentence that I added to try to clarify that we're, we're not, you know, identifying people as candidates. Add that to it and again, put it on the screen. And I think that's all, from what I gather, that's perhaps what we need to do. And we can, we can look at the Secretary of State's office and the Florida Election Commission and see if they've got any, they want to weigh in on this issue and, and bring that back to the Board. And we can talk about it later if it, if it becomes an issue further, as we get further into this. We can always address it, because these are our own rules. But those are just suggestions. Perhaps we, you know, we, we stay the same and put it on the screen or we add the one sentence and then we, we think about it some more and I'll, I'll try to look into it with the Secretary of State's office or the Election Commission. Those are just suggestions for the Board to consider.
And at that point, excuse me, Dan, at that point, we would discuss it at a, an informal?
However the Board wants to do it, I could certainly bring it back to you at that point and we could talk it over again at the Board level.
Madam Chair, can we do a hybrid of this? I mean, I, you're talking December, if that comes back in December at an informal or January, whatever. And then we're already kicking into election year. And it's either we set the tone or we don't. And it's important to me... And it's important to me that the decorum for the process, as you mentioned, becomes the priority. So we have the right to go ahead and make the changes because it is a meeting that we are conducting and this is the conduct and stuff. So even putting the whole thing on public comment up there, because I could know, we, we went through this when we changed public comment from five minutes to three minutes, but kept public hearing. And it was just notifying people, that's all we're doing. And reminding them that this is your place, as you said, Commissioner Townsend, this is your place to do the county's business. This isn't restricting anybody from saying anything. We've heard a lot of stuff over the years of, of public comment and it's just setting the decorum for it, for what's this room, this is, this is, can be government at its finest.
I agree.
And that, and that's the part I'm struggling with. I, I agree with free speech and all of that, but we don't even ask when we say to identify yourself, identify yourself for the record, we don't even ask what's your occupation? What do you do? You know, it's just your name.
Yep.
And in many cases, we don't even push the issue of if they don't give an address. I'm fine with that. Just identify yourself is all we're asking for, not what you do and so forth. So I don't think that's asking that much more.
No, I agree.
You know, to put in there. But I mean, I like the idea, put it up there and in the meantime, you know, Commissioners Zdowski, if you're willing to wait and because we've all seen sometimes when you start getting into asking the Attorney General opinions and all, it is months before they get back to you.
Next December.
You know.
But we're going to need it for the next election.
And that's, that's my fear of, it's just going to delay it and this is not a campaign issue. You know, this is to try to eliminate it becoming one.
Right. No, I agree.
I for one, I'll make a motion. I'm making a motion that we take the county attorney's verbiage of the one sentence, this includes any speaker identifying himself or herself as a candidate for public office.
I'll say.
Just adding that. And I like the idea of putting it up on the screen.
And is that a part of your motion to put it up on the screen, Commissioner?
Yes, to try, let's try that out and see.
Okay, just want to make sure.
If it's posted up there because, you know, right now, this, this, even this evening, and I'm not trying to belabor this one, but our recording secretary was having a hard time getting people's attention to fill out public comment cards and so forth. So that might be a better way of doing it, putting, you know, because it involves public comment, you can add that to it. You know, you know, please fill, if you intend on speaking, please fill out a card because she had to repeat it like three or four times before the meeting.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much. You have direction?
Yes, yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Madam Chair, relates to the Sable Creek Municipal Service Benefit Unit Special Assessment Revenue Bond. We have in the audience our county's Special Assessment Bond Council who prepared the resolution. This relates to the Sable Creek subdivision. We're providing water service and fire hydrants. We're doing this as, in conjunction with the Reserve Community Development District, which is a unit of government. So we're working as, under an agreement with them. We're providing, we're going to be providing and constructing the system and then turning it over to the Community Development District and they will actually be providing the service. So we're facilitating this as a, as a courtesy to another local government. It obviously provides a benefit to the homeowners in this particular subdivision. They've conveyed easements that allow the improvements to go in there, public easements. We have our, our financial advisors solicited quotes. We've got a, a quote from Center State Bank. They provided a favorable rate, I think it was 2.5 percent, which is a very attractive rate. We've validated the bonds. Mr. Rowe, again, is in the audience and so we've got a judicial determination that the bonds are, serve a public purpose and so that appeal period is running, so we feel very good about our, our prospects there. He's prepared a supplemental resolution which awards the sale of the bond to Center State Bank, specifies the rate of interest and describes the additional terms or provisions required by the, by the bank. These are bonds that are going to be secured by special assessments only. The county has no revenues pledged for this. The property owners that benefit this are paying for this, not the county. There's no ad valorem or non-ad valorem dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Questions, comments?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Attorney, on to item three, please.
All right, this item relates to a, a bequest that we got. We, we received a check in the mail of $5,000 from the estate of a Mr. Kenneth Smith. He bequested this in the, in his will and he wanted it to be utilized for the Fort Pierce branch of the St. Lucie County Library. We've been asked to accept that. We're, we're asking that the board approve the resolution and that amount. We also suggest that the board consider, perhaps through the board chair, writing a thank you letter, appreciating the, the donation of, of the, of the money. It's very gracious on the part of, of the estate and, and Mr. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and we are going to go forward to 10B, which is Human Resources. And I see the team coming up.
Madam Chair, I'm going to start it off for you for Agenda Item 10B1, which is Inmate Medical.
Mm-hmm.
And start with saying that we do not enjoy bringing this item to you at all. As we discussed in our July budget workshops and the September budget hearings, our inmate population at the jail is stubbornly high. A consequence of a higher population is the chance, and it turns out to be a very good chance, for a higher number of sick inmates, which in turn drives up our medical care costs. This issue has been not one, not just this year for the board, but at least each of the five years that I've been here. And it's probably one of the most frustrating funding issues when you think about the myriad of other ways that these funds could have been spent or reserves could have been increased or taxes could have been lowered. To be sure, the county's an important part of the justice system in terms of providing facilities, technology and funding, and a better solution to our current situation is necessary if we are going to meet the board's long-term goals for reducing taxes and improving services. Success in this arena is going to take a collective justice system effort. Interim HR Director Doug Baber and Risk Manager Mark Wishard will be making a brief presentation, and I emphasize brief, before the board. Staff is recommending approval of this item, but also looking for board direction as to next steps as part of this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. Mr. Tipton, good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Douglas Baber, interim Human Resources Director for St. Lucie County, for the record. The number of inmates in our county jail and inmate medical expenses has reached a high that we have not seen in many years and not one that we budgeted for this past year. As the county administrator mentioned, the Board of County Commissioners has the fiduciary responsibility for the fund, the inmate medical program. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation to go over the key issues. However, two points are very clear. We have seen an increase in hospital claims of 74% over the last year. And two, we have seen a higher inmate populations. We've also discussed some ways to continue to mitigate our risk and exposure through contracted services through Correctional Risk Services, CRS, our third-party vendor who scrubs our bills, which we've saved over $7.5 million this past year. We've also are maintaining our stop-loss policy for the next fiscal year, which has returned more than $1 million from a $380,000 investment premium this past year. Recent successes by working with the St. Lucie County Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office to send more non-traumatic inmates to the Cleveland Clinic has helped our processes. Contributing with more than $750,000 to local nonprofits that assist with helping to lower inmate populations through programs and assistance. To spend more than $11 million for inmate medical expenses as a number that includes treatment for both the jail and when they have to go to specialty facility hospitals. This is a total that is more than nine of our county departments together. This is a sobering perspective, especially when you think about this next budget year and the needs of our community. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our Risk Manager, Mark Wishard, to take you through the brief PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Just like to take you through a brief PowerPoint on the status of inmate medical and where we're at this year. Wexford provides the in-jail medical care for the inmates. They've been there for now for about two years and we use the company CRS and they work with us to apply discounts for the invoices when they come in for the medical care that they receive. Medical claims this past fiscal year we just completed have increased 43%, bringing the total claims to an all-time high of 1,518 claims. So with the increases in the jail population, we've seen the increase in the claims at the same time. Of the claims we saw this year, 14 exceeded $75,000 and of those 14, five totaled, the highest, the, the largest five totaled $1.1 million. So it's quite a stress on the county and the taxpayers. For, for a budget timeline, just to give you a, a brief history, we began the, the budget last fiscal year at 3.2 million. We came back to the board for approval to amend the budget two times and you can see it went to 4.7, 5.3. Year-to-date activity this year is 6.2 and right now we have outstanding invoices that total 785,000, so bringing the total claims to $7,450,000. The amount that we're requesting approval for this evening is 1.6. To help further tell the story, if you look at the 10-year trend from fiscal year 2009 through fiscal year 2019, you can see how the cost has increased over the years, but you see the biggest jump in the last two years, fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. Another interesting chart we just wanted to look at briefly shows the population-to-inmate ratio and it's, it's kind of important to tell the story when you compare St. Lucie County to other counties in our area and, and you can see, at the time they took this survey, May the 22nd, 2019, we had 223 citizens per inmate. So certainly it shows that, that we have our challenges cut out for us. Inmate medical CRS comparison, we took a look at the last two fiscal years. In fiscal year 1718, we had 870 claims and last fiscal year that jumped to the, to the 1,518 we mentioned. As you go down the chart, you can see there are some denials. Sometimes the claims come in and, and we shouldn't pay them and don't and CRS is good at catching those for us and some are denied charges or ineligible. The bill charges to the county this past fiscal year was 13,971 and the net savings to the county was about, well, we, we paid 44% of those claims, so with a discount, the paid invoices came in at 5.9. So CRS is, is very effective at, you know, scrubbing the bills, applying discounts and, and they basically do that by being able to promise quick payment to the hospital. So when they're sure they're going to get the payment, then we usually get a, a good discount for that. By the way, this does not include any expenses for the HIV medications and the psychotropics. That, that would be an additional expense on top of, of the chart we're looking at Loss mitigation, we, we have a stop-loss policy that Doug mentioned. So our policy right now kicks in at $75,000 and caps at 250,000. We had 14 claims, I mentioned, that we could capitalize on that through last year. For this fiscal year that we're in, we're able to get the stop-loss policy again with the same limits, but the premium for that policy went up about $100,000. One of the concerns we have is that we may not be able to get that stop-loss policy when we go into 2020. If, if the claims trend continues on the path it is, it may make it difficult to get a policy for the next year. But the good news is for this fiscal year, this past we just finished, we paid $380,000 for that policy and the county's going to recover roughly 1.3 million and that, that will go back toward helping us, you know, pay for inmate medical. We have, we continue to work with the ROR to release citizens back on their own recognizance and we've got the pre-trial program that's very successful at, at helping those people get back into the community to have families and pay bills and so forth. So it's a very valuable program. And then lastly, the board approved for fiscal year 20, funding nonprofits at, at the rate of $750,000, things like Life Builders, Round Table St. Lucie County and New Horizons.
That was the brief presentation that we put together. Our recommendations, I've recommends board approval to transfer 1.672, $830 from the general fund reserves, economic impact reserves, emergency reserves to cover the inmate medical and HIV medication expenses from fiscal year 2019.
Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
I don't have.
That's exactly what I was going to do.
First, I've just got a question on one of your slides on there. The one thing that I saw missing that would be helpful, you had shown the increase in the cost, the graph that you showed that showed the increase in the last two years, but what I'm not seeing on there that would be helpful, if you could also show me a line, you know, I'll get there, it doesn't have to be tonight, that shows the increase in the population, the jail population.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I think that becomes a telling story. Unfortunately, go and, this goes back to one of those, the water's already, the horse is out of barn and we don't have any alternative but to pay this, but that doesn't mean I have to pay it and not say anything.
Well, you don't have to pay it and not like it.
Yeah, but, so years ago, and I'll age myself one more time, but I'm beginning to like being older. And Commissioner Zdowski, unfortunately, you're not that old yet because I don't think you are on the board, but I know.
He's old, but, yeah.
Hunter Sheriff Wilson is sitting back there, as is Toby, and they will probably remember and Dan will remember this. Years ago, there was a much heated, much publicly involved from all the different agencies look at reducing cost at the jail, whether it was the need for new pods, medical and so forth. And it all came into play many moons ago. And at that time, there was, the Public Safety Council was meeting consistently all the time and it was like the subject of the day, as I recall. We had the judges were all at the table, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, the bail bondsman, everybody was at the table. That's where the pre-trial came into play and we did a study that I don't even want to bring up from back. But that being said, it would be helpful because of the length of time that's gone past, if we can have this brought back at an informal meeting with nothing else on the agenda for that timeframe, you know, for the meeting. Because there's a lot of history that everybody needs to be brought up to speed on of things we've done, things we didn't do, the reasons why, what helped, what didn't help, before we can start addressing this issue. Because I'd like to have a better understanding of, as I said, the inmate population to the illnesses. Who's overseeing that? Where is it going? Are we working better with the court system? Are we, because we've now got all new judges, court administration, the, the whole nine yards. If there's something that we're not catching again. I know Commissioner Townsend, you sit on the Public Safety Council and I don't think they meet once a month like they used to.
No, we, we've been meeting pretty regularly and, and this was just brought up actually by Mr. Wilson at the meeting last week. And you are correct, there's new judges, there's a new chief judge. And so conversations that I actually had yesterday with a public defender is I think that with what Mr. Wilson brought up, it's a new season. So I think that we need to come together in a room. It was the beginning, I think, of great conversation. I just don't think the meeting lasted long enough for us to really get there at that point because I don't think anybody was prepared for it. And I think there needs to be a conversation with more of the. to be a conversation with more of the judges that are serving to be in the room, because the chief judge was speaking, and there was another judge there that was a new judge, and so I think that it's time to engage in conversation and have more of the judges in the room along with the Sheriff's Department, because this is an issue, and it's, we, I agree.
Go ahead.
No, I agree with you. I think this should be discussed in an informal meeting, and I think it's a good time to have this conversation, because it was a very big topic of the meeting with Roy Hudson and I, along with Gary Wilson and stuff, so it's time to bring it forward, and you're right, there's a long history here with this, and there's been a changing of everything out there. We know the medical wing has issues, and so it's time, I think, to open up this conversation.
But having said that, and I'm glad you said that it's already been brought up, so it won't become as a surprise to any of the different agencies involved, but, you know, maybe at the informal, I wouldn't say the entire Public Safety Committee, you know, because I would like this to go back to them and bring forward some recommendations like they've done in the past, but maybe we can have somebody from there, whether it's the chief judge, or, I know, are you chair?
I am the chair.
Okay, or whomever, you know, the Sheriff's Department, obviously, that they can sit there and listen and talk with us at that informal to kind of get everybody up to speed, and so we're all walking into this with our eyes wide open, and we're all going to join hands and try to find a solution like we've done in the past type of thing, so there's no surprises, then they can hear our conversation.
All right. Any other comment?
Madam Chair, obviously, I'm concerned about the amount of taxpayer dollars that are being spent on inmate medical costs. We have huge needs for our loyal, abiding citizens that go unmet and through the funding constraints. It's more frustrating to see the amount of money that we're spending on this, and I just, let me say upfront, of course, we have to provide appropriate medical care for the people in our court's custody, but I guess part of my concern is over the numbers of the people that we have in our jail. If other judicial courts around the state of Florida have lower inmate numbers with similar, greater populations, and also the same number of tourists, wouldn't we want to explore the approaches that they're using and it'd be a benefit for our community? The Board wants, if the Board wants to, and I know we want to reduce our tax rate for next year, and we're concerned about our level of reserves, we're going to need a much more in-depth understanding of what we can collectively do to improve, to get these numbers down to a more sustainable later. Maybe we should just, instead of lock them up, lock the doors for us and all the people that help make these decisions until we come up with a good, reasonable response. So I agree with Commissioner Townsend and Commissioner Hutchinson that we've got to sit down, and we've got to be able to work this out, and time is of the essence. Thank you.
Commissioner Zdowski.
Yeah, there are some systemic things that we need to continue to work on, and we have a legislative item going through the feds where inmates, those who've been not convicted, actually just arrested, where they lose their benefits if they have Medicare or if they're on Social Security, whatever, and the issue with that is, we pay a much higher number than the Medicare rate. So if the issue for the federal government to say that you lose your benefits because you have been incarcerated and not adjudicated, but the cost to the local taxpayers is exponentially higher than that which would be your benefits from the federal government, whether it's Medicare or Social Security, whatever the case, that conversation has to be led and had to be listened to by our federal legislative delegation. The other issue here is that the state of Florida, their inmates are at 10% above the Medicare rate, so they pay 110% of Medicare rate, and so there's an unlevel playing field there. We have inmates who have been in our jail for, I think, one I just looked up today from the recent thing we got from the sheriff, 6.42 years, so more than six and a half years. I get that they don't want to have an appeal or anything like that, they want to be prepared for their defense, but if they're that bad and that much of a problem, and they're getting their case heard and adjudicated, should they not be transferred to the state jail, prison, until their case can be heard? Because they are only paying 110% of the Medicare rate, and so that's a benefit, that would be a benefit to our taxpayers. So again, these are just little things that, you know, add up to stuff, but I want to say very clearly that, and I've been through some battles on this in the past, that we have a good partner in the Sheriff's Office, we have good partners in our HR and oversight on trying to find solutions, and we've got to have this conversation, because we have deputies out there that need equipment and training, and, you know, we've been fortunate enough to focus on public safety, as we have for the last few years, but, you know, inmate medical, it should not be where the money goes. It should be going to our deputies, it should be going for training, it should be going for the vehicles necessary, the technology to get crimes solved faster, et cetera. So, you know, I think we have a great team in St. Lucie County, and I think we can find those opportunities, but this is really disheartening to see this number, and again, you know, the jail population is what it is. People do bad things. I just think we are unfortunate to have had those folks come to our county and be arrested, but, you know, we're dealing with it. We have always taken a positive, proactive approach and a cooperative approach with those entities that will be a part of this, and I think it's a great idea to, you know, the Public Safety Council to really kind of go through the history, and you're right, there is a long history. There was a point where we were going to build a facility at the jail so that a lot of the cases wouldn't have to be brought to the emergency room. So there's a lot of history, we should talk about that. There's been a lot of changes here on the dais and our culture in the county and our relationships county-wide.
And even the court system.
And the court system, absolutely.
There's been a lot of changes.
So there, you know, lots of new energy, lots of new thoughts. I think we'll find a new way of looking at things and be more successful.
And, Madam Chair, if I could just add one more thought. I actually had a conversation with the Health Department, and, you know, they're even willing to come to the table and help on ways that they can, especially with the HIV meds or something like that, making sure that they're registered, which affects the cost too. So I think we have a lot of willing partners to try to get an answer here or a solution of some kind, and it's just a matter of, we just need to put everybody together and then send it back to public safety and let them vet it all through.
So let me say as well that I spent some time out at the jail with Wexford in the medical area to see how they were handling different things. I have talked to the major. I've actually got appointments set up, and I certainly talked to the chief deputy about this. I also spent some time in Washington about three weeks ago, going to our legislators and letting them know about what is happening. Commissioner Zdowski, you have some good comments about that? I'm not sure that you are aware that if you have a veteran, and we know now that veterans can retire as early as 38, they go in at 18, 20 years to retirement, you know, we are facing a large number of PTSD diagnoses, and many of them are being treated with high doses of the psych medications, plus there are many that have been prescribed the opioids, and as typical, their body gets more used to it, and so now they're on the street buying them. So then, my point being is that then they're arrested. They lose their retirement. Well, they are incarcerated, they lose their retirement. Now, I understand that their spouse can apply, but she only gets a tiny portion. So we forget that along with this problem, there's a bigger problem. You have a spouse at home that can't pay the mortgage, can't feed the kids, doesn't have medical coverage, on top of what's going on in the jail. The discussion in Washington was not that we asked for money, but we felt we were bringing them a solution as to letting them keep their benefits when they're arrested. I don't know about any of you, but the America I grew up in said innocent until proven guilty. And sometimes the charges are dropped, sometimes they go to trial and are adjudicated innocent, takes time to get their benefits back, and nobody gives them to them retro. So if you lost that as retirement, you don't get the back pay. So this is a much bigger issue than the jail, as big as it is there, but where do the people go? They go to the state and the federal government. We've got to find a way, because this, there is a trickle-down effect, and we've got to find a way that we are able to save money and still do what we need to do with the inmates coming in, and reducing, you know, in ways that we can, that population that is there. I can tell you that this has been a big issue. I appreciate all the comments, but this is also a fight that I'm willing to take on for all of us, and will continue, because it's just too big. I was surprised to find out some of the numbers, and you're right, we have great partners.
We do.
So bringing this back to an informal, although I think that we have said so much here, but I think that what we've realized is, this is important to all of us, every one of us sitting up here and our staff outside, so we want to continue. So I would give, unless you have a problem, I would give direction, Mr. Tipton and Mr. McIntyre, to bring this back to an informal, but an informal that this is the only topic, and certainly if we can get some representation from some of our partners, it would be conducive of a better conversation. So is that okay with everyone?
That's okay. Do you need a motion to approve to pay the bill for the General Fund Reserve?
We do.
Motion to approve.
Second, I'm open.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Tipton, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Just a few announcements. County offices will be closed on November 11th, this coming Monday in observance of Veterans Day. We hope everybody gets out to some of the celebrations that are out there, and if you certainly know a vet or have one in your family, please say thank you for their service to our country. Also, as a reminder, our November 12th informal meeting has been canceled, so that our next regular meeting with the Commission will be on November 19th at 9:00 AM here in these chambers.
Madam Chair, can I just have one quick board comment? Commissioner Townsend, you made a comment a while ago about changing up the agenda, the layout, if you will, of it, and I've sat here and thought about it, and I really like that idea of putting it prior to, so do we have to vote on that, or is that just something that staff can be directed?
That's just protocol.
Okay, could I ask, the 19th is our next meeting, is our reorg, and that's a perfect time to me to say start it then, and maybe let's, instead of halfway through it here, of maybe putting that public comment there, and let's see how it works.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? You jerk.